Good evening. Thank you all for coming. I'm Adam Block. I'm the Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I call this meeting to order, finding a forum. This meeting of the planning board is being recorded and is also being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with state regulations. Does that feel like that just started?
He just locked down.
All right. All materials supporting the agenda are included online at our website, which is needhamma.gov. The first item on our agenda, which we'll come to momentarily, is a public hearing. However, that public hearing, we're actually going to reschedule. So that will in a moment, once we open the hearing and then go to continue it to the 17. And then we have an appointment also at the same time with the Needham Housing Authority. So we'll move into that after we deal with our first agenda item.
I'll maybe just let people know why it's.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna come to that once we get there. And so, and then we've got a couple of ZBA cases, and then we have three minutes. And maybe we'll be able to be able to hear by nine thirty. So this is Paul. Why I like to schedule them at seven and not seven oh five. So we can just jump right into our.
It's seven oh five.
Oh, it is almost exactly.
I have I feel I'm gonna wait one more minute till it says seven oh five. And then we're good.
The six seven half.
Exactly. So I think it is actually not quite. Just another minute. Thanks for your patience, right? You have their gene. I'm looking at the wall clock.
That's wrong.
And I'm also looking at the time from Apple. Seven oh four. Now it's seven oh five. It's seven of five, seven oh five, and the first item on our agenda is a hearing at seven oh five. Relating to an application by Lehigh as the property owner for a property located at the property is located on Island Avenue, six twenty five. Thank you very much. Six thirty nine to six sixty one Island Avenue. Regarding a redevelopment of the site to include a two-story fifty thousand square foot medical office building, being special major project site plan special permit number two thousand twenty-three dash zero three. We, as part of the process, we had asked the petitioner to agree to engage in a third-party peer review of the traffic assessment. And they agreed to do that at the last meeting. And the town engaged GPI as an independent third-party peer review of the traffic impact analysis. They prepared a summary of comments, which has been sent over to the to the petitioner, and the petitioner is in the process of reviewing it with their traffic engineers. So in light of that, the applicant has requested to continue the hearing to October seventeen. So what I would like to do is first ask Lee before I take a motion. Should we deal with this after we deal with one seventeen Kendrick? Probably, or?
If you want, we can do it that way, which means we would do this maybe at seven thirty. Or seven twenty?
We have a hearing scheduled.
No, we don't.
We don't have a hearing scheduled, but we have, we have a meeting, an appointment with a property owner to talk about opening up part of their site to create a loading, a new loading area. So that would probably be, I think, ten or fifteen minutes of, ten minutes of their conversation, and then probably knowing our board, there's five of us, conservative, five minutes apiece. That's twenty, twenty-five minutes.
So seven thirty.
So seven thirty. So can I have a motion to continue the hearing on major project site plan special permit two thousand twenty-three dash zero three to October seventeen twenty twenty-three at seven thirty, please?
So.
We have a motion by Gene, a second by by Artie. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes carry, there's no extension. No names. The motion carries unanimously. This brings us to an appointment at seven oh five with the Needham Housing Authority. With us tonight is Reg Foster, the Chair of the Needham Housing Authority. We also have engineer architect from BHNA, Dan Chen. I believe we have Margaret Moran from the Cambridge Housing Authority as a consultant and developer for the project, I believe. And then, in addition to the Needham Housing Authority, we also have attorney Bob Smart, representing the developer. Reg, do you want to kick off?
Sure.
Bob to kick off?
I'll just take a five minutes hopefully and just set the table why we're here tonight. And thank you for inviting us back. I'm Reg Foster. I'm Chair of the Needham Housing Authority. We're here tonight. Let me try to put it in context. In two thousand nineteen, Needham Housing Authority committed, completed a facilities master plan, which is a strategy for renovating, redeveloping all three hundred and thirty-six of our deeply affordable units that are in various stages of being worn out. And it defined five projects that we could get funded and accomplished. There's a two thousand twenty COVID hiatus, we might all remember, in mid-two thousand twenty-one. We launched and announced the Needham Housing Authority Preservation and Redevelopment Initiative, sometimes known as PRI as an acronym. And that set a top ten-year timeframe to find the funding and accomplish the redevelopment or modernization of all three hundred and thirty-six of those units. And we also in mid-two thousand twenty-one hired the Cambridge Housing Authority as our development consultant. Two thousand twenty-two, based on the Cambridge Housing Authority's analysis and recommendations, the Housing Authority committed to go forward with the first two projects. The first one is the redevelopment of a hundred and fifty-two unit Linden Chambers site and development, and that's the reason we're here tonight. And by the way, this has been the top Needham priority since the two thousand and seven Affordable Housing Plan, and also the top priority in the recently completed twenty twenty-two housing plan as well. And the second project is the updating, modernization, renovation, preservation of our seabeds and cook of units, seventy-six units there. And in the on-deck circle is the third project, which we won't be starting for another year or two, because this is all we can handle at the same time, is the redevelopment of the High Rocket Estates sixty bungalows there. That's our original World War II veterans housing that is very long in the tooth right now.
There's still, still, still sixty of them?
Sixty, sixty left. We did twenty in two thousand and five. That turned into forty duplex units. January two thousand twenty-three, after a permanent effort, we hired BHNA and their team to help us with the lead Linden Chambers project and to basically go into a kickoff of the conceptual design phase that was completed in June of two thousand twenty-three, and we came before you on June twentieth and presented the results of that. And, and got a lot of good guidance and input, not only from the planning board, but also we did a a large community engagement process with neighbors and residents and other parties, and we took that all into consideration. And now we've been in the schematic design phase, which we were just finishing, essentially finished right now. And that's what we're going to present tonight is the, the results of that and the changes that have come about as a result of what we had to do during schematic design. So there are sort of over five objectives for tonight to present that to you. To also present the proposed zoning that goes along with that, and that's why Bob Smart is with us here tonight to answer any questions, to get more guidance and input. And then also to discuss, you know, you know, our community engagement plan that we planned under to go through over the next month or so. So I think everybody's, the table has been introduced. We also have members of our team on, as attendees, they can be brought in as Dan or Margaret desires, but they can be announced at that time. Let me turn it over to Dan to take it away from here.
Can I just quickly?
And could you share my?
Yes. So, so do you not, I've tried to move it over some people whose names I recognized. Only one person did come over so far. Do you just want me to have everybody stay in attendees and you bring them over as?
I think that's fine.
Okay. And then, Reg, I don't, oh, okay. I was trying to bring Dan over, but I can bring you over.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, yeah, there I am. All right.
I think I'm also logged in, so if you want to bring me over.
You do have to do something on your end?
Okay. But you don't need to do it now. Yeah, you can. All right, great. So here we go. Okay, so this is.
So, good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Dan Chen. I'm the lead architect for this effort at redevelopment Needham Housing Authority. As Rich mentioned, we have, we are in the midst of schematic design towards the end. There are several sort of updates based on the schematic design prime, most of which are cost-driven with this project. So without further ado, one, one thing I will mention is you will see a lot of comparisons between what you've seen back in June of this year, what we call the concept design, and what we are today. So hopefully that serves as a baseline for you to understand where the design is, is moving today. So this is a quick sort of list. I, I won't go through all of it. Really, the, the big issue here is that we, we had during the concept design, we had one hundred and forty-four one bedrooms, and when I say one hundred and forty-four, I mean phase one A and one B. And, and, and as you know, the total redevelopment of the site has at the the concept stage has three buildings, phase one A, phase one B, and phase two. And in phase one A and one B, and that's what I will primarily focus on tonight, is because that's, that's where that immediate, this is the, the next develop, or rather, the, the building that's first to go. So we have one hundred and forty-four one-bedroom units. And, and we have essentially two buildings in phase one A, one B. And phase one A was a U-shaped building, phase one B was a U-shaped building. And so because of that, both of the buildings have their own sets of infrastructure, has their own, as you can see in image on the right, that, that's what you saw back in June. And, and so it has its own elevators, which has two elevators. So we, we have four elevators total in phase one A, one B. We had four staircases, egress. We had individual mechanical rooms, electrical rooms, and so on and so forth. So everything was, was doubled in, in concept report. And, and from that point, and as I said in the beginning, the cost was a, was a driver of, of the schematic designs we moved into, or as we're developing the design. And there was some real pressure, both in terms of construction cost from, from today's market, as, as well as the sort of the inefficiencies of the plan that we presented. So, so a, a large effort in schematic designs is by combining those two buildings really into, still there, phase one A, one B, but into a shared core, what we call a shared core design, in which you'll, you'll see that. Another major element here was we combined the amenity spaces that used to exist in each of the U-shaped buildings into one, one room. That again is shared between phase one A, one B. And, and finally, we were looking to produce the most compact footprint. And the reason we're, we do that is that is, that, that helps us to, one, provide more open area, open space on the site. Two is that it, it helps to, to provide the maximum amount of units with the minimum amount of footprint. It's the most economical way to look at a cost reduction. So in, in essence, we reduced the height of the units in terms of the actual finish ceiling height. In concept report was nine feet, and in each apartment, now we have eight feet, which is still very generous, given the five hundred and seventy-six square feet apartment. And we, in general, have reduced roughly thirteen thousand square feet of footprint, and, I'm sorry, of a square feet, as well as footprint. So the building, in essence, has really become much tighter, and it's a straight bar. We eliminated almost all the deficiencies of, of the previous concept design. And all of this is done to, to maximize the dollar that is available for this project. Next. So additionally, there are some benefits in the current schematic design versus back when we had the concept design. One of the, the major element, or the major benefit here was a distance setback from Linden Street. When we had the two U-shaped buildings, we were about twenty-five feet away from the sidewalk. And, and this was those two arms that are immediate sort of next to the sidewalk. And from many of our meetings with the residents and, and the butters, those were, those were challenging in that having a three-story building only twenty-five feet step back away from, from the sidewalk was, was problematic. And the other, the other thing there was at the height of the building, at the three stories, we had a fifty, we had a fifty-one feet height to the ridge of the pitch roof. And again, that was also in a sort of design element that we, we were looking to, to balance between fitting into the neighborhood architecturally versus, versus accommodating the enough density units that we're asking. Today's design, the schematic design, because now we, we have pulled the buildings back and, and away from Linden Street and, and by about eighty feet. And, and the reason we can do this is that we, because we compacted the footprint of the building, we, we increased the building height to four stories instead of three. And, and also they both share the core, and, and so you can see that it, it now sort of pulls away, pulling the parking and, and the buffered zone in front of these buildings to try to shield this, this, this schematic design building. We, in terms of unit count, we have hundred and thirty-six units instead of hundred and forty-four. And within the hundred and thirty-six units, there's hundred and twenty-eight one bedrooms, the other eight are two bedrooms. And, and the reason for this configuration is, is primarily due also to the financial metrics that with the two bedrooms, you will have a higher income to, to offset the lost bedrooms. So we, we continue to have hundred and forty-four bedrooms, in essence. So if I can go to the next one, everything else sort of stays the same in terms of the metrics. We have zero point five parking ratio on the site versus the concept report has zero point five parking ratios. And in, in terms of the, the amenities, we have two thousand square feet still in, in the center core area that you see here. Then just beyond this phase one A, one B, you see phase two. And so as a schematic design, our, our goal as, as a whole redevelopment is to, in essence, understand the entire development potential of this, this development. And so when we, when we came in front of you in June two thousand twenty-three, was two hundred and fifty-two units of a total redevelopment, phase one A, one B, and two. Right now, we have, including phase two, two hundred and forty-seven units. So again, that's a loss of eight, eight units.
So phase two is still the same?
That's correct, and at this point. So if I can go to the next.
Yeah, total is what replaces the hundred and fifty-two.
The, the, yes, yeah.
To two hundred and forty-two.
Two hundred and forty-seven is what we currently have.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and so on the left, you see sort of the impact of moving the building away from Linden Street. On the right is what we presented back in June of, of this year. So you, you can see that, that those big volume are twenty-five feet away from Linden Street on the right in the concept design. And in the schematic design, it's around about eighty feet from the most sort of protruding portion, which is that, that black box, which will, will be more apparent in the side plane. One, and the other, the other difference here is that you have three stories along Linden Street in concept design, and you have a, a uniform four-story in, in the new schematic design. Next slide. This is looking from Linden Street, looking north to orient you. On the left is the ball field, on the right is the development. On the left is schematic design, four stories, a concept design, three stories. Again, you can sort of see this, the impact of the setback on Linden Street, pulling the building back eighty feet plus is, does make a, a significant buffer than what was in the concept design. Next. And, and finally, this is standing at the entrance into middle or High Rock Middle School. And you see phase one A on, on the left in schematic design, and then you see that same view on concept design, three stories. Next. And, and lastly, I, for this slide, is, is a sort of, you know, how, how did you do that? How did you add force, an additional floor, and yet only added two feet to the overall height of, of this development? So this diagram attempts to explain that, where in the concept report, we had a nine-foot clear ceiling in all the apartments. We had a much higher pitch roof for the architectural features for, on, on the building. Where in the current schematic design, we are two feet higher. We reduced the, the height of the unit height from nine feet to eight feet. So that helped us to reduce the height, as well as in, in inserting, if you will, the fourth floor into that previously higher attic space. And so in essence, the, while the, the height has grown by two feet, we were, we were able to put in four buildings. Now, what's the downside? There's, you know, the negative side here is that architecturally, the building does appear somewhat flatter than what it was when it was three stories, was the high pitch roof. Next. This is a, a quick analysis between the wetland, as you know, on this site, we have wetlands on this, on the east side facing Maple Street neighborhood. And so in the current condition, existing condition, there's about fifteen thousand seven hundred plus into the fifty-feet buffer zone. There's about eleven hundred square feet into the twenty-five buffer zone. The significance here is the twenty-five feet. As we met with the Conservation Commission, twenty-five feet is sacrosanct, in that that really wants to protect anything inside, meaning they don't want anything inside of that twenty-five feet. As you can see, in the concept design, we have made reductions in the schematic design by reducing the building footprint even more. You have sort of increased that efficiency, if you will, or the, the, another way to say is, we've reduced the infringement into the buffer, the buffer zone, both in the fifty percent and the twenty-five percent.
You, I, I don't have it up in front. I mean, I, I didn't pick it up. I can't remember. This is also a little too small from this distance. Is the rear all of phase one and two, of phase one A and one B into the fifty-foot or the twenty-five-foot? What? Do not disturb.
It is, it is, nothing in this design is inside the twenty-five-feet buffer zone, or no disturbed zone.
So could you, do you have any more room on the site?
Could you, could you zoom into that?
Come out of it, yeah.
Do you have any more? I have it here. Do you have any more room to push?
The building back even more.
Yeah, towards Maple Street. Can you go another fifteen feet? You're at eighty, you weren't twenty-five. You've more than tripled the setback. Which is an improvement, right?
Yes.
But can you go another fifteen or twenty feet without disturbing the wetlands? What would the Conservation Commission ask? In other words, in other words, is that the twenty-five?
Yes, that is the twenty-five. So we're, we're very tight on one, and, and this is part of the reason why the building is twisted or angled the way it is, and sort of that, that angle leg is, is sort of outside of the twenty-five feet. And, and that was by intent. And so we, we, we have studied many versions of this. And so the most efficient form is a straight bar, and then we also had want to stay outside of twenty-five feet. And, and just, you know, for buildings, the disturbance is also important to understand. So it's not just about building footprint right on the line. There's footings that will be sort of extruding outside. There will also be, when you cut the footings and, and backfill, so they are tolerances, if you will, that presumably we'd like to, to maintain, and that generally is anywhere between five to ten feet.
You do have room in phase one B.
Yes.
Push that far on your back, probably another ten or fifteen feet by the looks of that.
You, you, you can look at that, that's correct, towards the twenty-five-feet buffer zone line. The other, the other issue here is we wanted to make this footprint as compact as we can to save cost. And so because they share the core between phase one A, one B, and phase one B extends, all that extra square footage is multiplied four times. And so at this time, we are looking at a phase one A, one B building off of about hundred and seven thousand square feet. And what we started off in concept design was one hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet. So in essence, roughly a seventeen thousand square foot reduction.
If they push one B back another fifteen feet, so they were, they were complying with the twenty-five-foot do not disturb, but there's between the twenty-five-foot and the fifty-foot area, does, does Concon typically allow that, or is that a strict no between twenty-five and fifty?
I don't really.
It's not, it's not a strict, it's not actually strict no. But, but I mean, if the area is absolutely, is, is totally disturbed already, then there can be a lot, certainly can be the allowance going to the fifty. We don't like it necessarily, but there can be allowance going into it, right, Paul? That's why we use it.
It's a strict, it's a strict no if it's wooded.
Yeah, yeah.
But if it's all like grassland.
Yeah.
It's not a strict no. Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yeah.
So we did check this out with the concept phase, this exact point, and they were very pleased that we were making such a, a, you know, significant improvement. Even though it was disturbed, they liked that. And so if we make even a better improvement, that will be good. But there is one other thing I probably should have mentioned in my opening is that we did a full DRT review, development review team with all the town departments, the representative heads and the representatives. And one factor that I would mention is the fire chief, of course, wants to be able to drive as big as fire truck, ladder truck round the back where you were trying to push, push the one B building. You know, so we got a, we, we, we were weighing that in when we were being. Well, it's not a road, but it has to be a surface that a fire track, truck is going to get stuck in, in a muddy season. And it can't be within the twenty-five-foot zone.
So we have to push this another eighteen feet away from the twenty-five-foot zone.
Well, so it doesn't have to be that much, but, but, but we're trying, we're trying to balance all those considerations.
Also, if I may, because I'm looking at the schematic. When you say that that the setback is eighty feet, I'm noticing that phase one B is set back in Linden Street considerably more than phase one A. When you say that it's eighty feet from Linden Street, are you talking about the closest point?
Yes.
On phase one A. So phase one B is already set back, probably. On phase one A. So phase one B is already set back probably ninety or hundred feet. Maybe ninety feet. At least ninety feet. From 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 the Linden Street.
So the eighty foot mark is to one A.
Eighty eight feet is to that most proud point on the side plan, right there. That to Linden Street property line is eighty eight feet. Outside of the property line, there's a five foot sidewalk.
You have, do you have tolerance sliding another, well, like sixteen feet towards Linden Street to allow that access road?
I I I think currently what we have between sort of the back of phase one B, there's a, there's a strip of green space. And so we sort of thought, or there is allocation for some driveling, not not necessarily driveling, but a perme- or permeable surface.
I think one A is, one A is the bigger issue.
Uh, I think one A, you you would only serve, be able to serve on both sides, not not necessarily get to the backside.
I my sense, you don't have to go circles around it. You have to be able to get it both sides, you know, you know.
But he, but he doesn't care if it circles around, he just has to be able to get behind both sides.
Yes. But you know, let's write that down as a thing to follow up on. I think that's, you know, both both of. The question of whether we can adjust a little bit more. Um, and then also making sure that we keep the fire chief happy here. It's a fully sprinkler building, not that that makes any difference to the same specification, but it, you know.
I'm I'm glad you mentioned about when when you back to building, building and the footings digging down. On the conservation commission, whenever anyone comes to us, they say, you know, we want the building here. Um, at this, at this dimension relative to the wetland. But we know they're going back, and this is just a house. We know they're going back another three or four feet, five feet from there. So we've seen basically say you have to take that into account. These wetlands are very important. Um, the the footprint of the trees are very important, so they don't get compacted. The wood, wood is extremely important. So the, so what is the? So you're saying right now that is pretty much right at, is it right at the twenty four foot zone?
No, it's actually right, right around. There's a little bit of red that into the fifty feet buffer zone on phase one B.
But I'm seeing, I'm seeing a line that's right near the twenty five.
That.
Is that the building right there?
That actually is the current building footprint. We have the existing Linden building that's shade dotted onto this site plan as well. And and so that is the current, one of the buildings in in uh Linden Chambers.
There's a, there's a strip. That you've got between the buildings.
If 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 this dotted lines, what you're saying, talking about, that is a current footprint of Linden Chamber building, I'm sorry, Linden building. Here, there is a green strip along the backside.
Yes.
Of phase one B.
What's that green strip?
And that green strip is to provide some buffer.
What about A? What what about A? So so in A, the the orange is color, that's the new building.
That's a building footprint, that's a trip of the green, and then this is the twenty five feet line.
And the strip of the green is the existing building?
No, these are new, these are all proposed, all new design.
So the green is just that, it's green space?
Yeah, it it's it's buffering because part of it is we do have units on first floor for the residential. So you don't. Always, you know, there there needs to be some sort of shielding when you have ten one bedrooms spacing this way. On the first floor, agree, that this, that that needs to sort of have buffering, that that is a function of those green spaces.
Do they have access back there with tenants? Do they have access?
Yeah, so so from a. Uh, landscape concept, which we're also developing with our landscape architect, we were hoping to 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 map or to. Capitalize on sort of this beautiful back area to to create a trail or some sort of recreation for the residents. And 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 both of these green areas also then come in play in that concept as well.
But but the, do the residences have a back door to the place?
The units themselves.
They they do not, only, we we have not sort of.
Okay.
Develop that area, whether this would be some sort of. Fence and, and you know, enclosed fence that they can come in and out. At this, at the moment, there's no access.
Common access, but there's a common access.
There's a common access out of this there here, there's a common access here and one here. And and you'll see that in the next, in in sort of the floor plan, I can go to the next slide.
Okay, let me get this key back up here.
And what do you see will be between that green space that's behind the units and the property one? Basically, which is.
Uh, you want to go.
Fifty foot upper and the twenty five.
I've got to adjust the.
Were you here? Was it landscape or will that just be?
It it will be landscape. It 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 will be some, some sort of buffering landscape where the shrubs or have you, so providing some visual. Uh, both visual and physical.
Working with the conservation commission.
That that's correct. And and part of the landscape too was then. Uh, the design has been committed to what we told the conservation commission is improving or. Uh, what's already in or what's in that wetland zone such as the, the removal of invasive species and so on. So we do have a tree survey. As part of the the original uh existing condition concept study. So we do know sort of condition of the trees, species of the trees. And and as well as what species are existing in the in the wetland zone.
Um, so I think PowerPoint has crashed here, but let's see, I don't know, there we go, all right.
So I I I think for for a concept design, I, you know, the point here really is. Um, we had two hundred and fifty two units, we have both three and four stories, the four stories was on phase two in the concept design. And at that point, that four stories was was at uh sixty two feet. And that was again, a four story building was a pitch roof above that. Um, I think we can just go to the next one with you. If you can.
Yeah, I'm just dealing with some tech support. Now, we got it. Okay, here we go. This one or the next one?
The next one. So so uh quickly, site plan, you've seen this same slide. What's in orange is existing eighteen Linden building, what's in yellow is existing chambers building for total. Of hundred and fifty two studio units, that is average around four hundred and five square feet of of apartment.
And how many one bedrooms are in, uh, let's say, building one in chambers?
Uh.
Units.
Sixteen.
No one bedrooms, all studios.
Well, the internet hasn't answered. So, so sorry, I apologize, they're, they're studios, they're all studios.
They're all studios.
Chambers.
Yeah.
And uh there's sixteen in in each of the chambers buildings.
And that's a two level building.
Right, right.
No elevator.
Right, okay.
Um, so so the next slide, please. Um, and again, quickly, concept report, hundred and twenty two thousand square feet for phase one A and one B. And and you see that it's uh essentially a green space or three green spaces, a courtyard. Or two courtyards, phase one A, one B is individual U buildings and uh and parkings on the side. Next. Um, again, quickly, elevations, fifty one feet, that was at three stories, and and this. It was something that we need to balance the the architectural design into sort of the surrounding context on both Maple Street and Linden Street. Um, this is the next slide, the four stories, uh, phase two, at that, at the ridge height was sixty two feet. Next. Um, so schematic design for today, uh, uh, phase one A, one B and two, we have two hundred and forty seven units, they're all four stories. And we have hundred, uh, two hundred, two hundred and one thousand square feet. Um, and and that's about a thirteen thousand square feet reduction. And and this significantly helps us move towards the budget that we we can support. Um. Many things I've covered here, um, and and, you know, eighty, eighty, eight feet building setback from Linden Street. Um, hundred and thirty parking spaces and and four elevators and six eager stairs. And uh fifty three feet to the ridge height was the four stories.
And that's the chamber building as well.
That that's for the chamber building as well, that's correct.
Hematic design, that's the one that's proposed now.
That is correct.
Oh, I thought you said we have two elevators.
Uh, we only have two elevators.
He's he's got the the two elevators from phase two.
Yeah, sorry.
So one A. One B, right, okay, then, yeah.
And then the 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 other two are in phase two.
So that that's as compared to, we have six elevators in concept report.
So you have four elevators in three, in three, uh, three buildings. As opposed to six elevators in community buildings.
Uh, uh, right. I I mean, the easier way to think of it is you have two elevators in a really big building.
Yeah.
One A, one B, and you have two elevators in phase two.
Phase two basically the same as a, as a, as it was in gym.
Yes. That's correct.
Except, uh, low, less height.
Yeah, so we we did lower the the ridge height so that they're uniform, that they're all four stories. And and part of the reason that phase two building, I I can touch on that briefly. Is higher is because the site. Um, around the neighbors, we're we're far away and and there's not immediate butters in that back area. And also the grade in that uh neighbor where the high rock estates are, all sort of helps with a higher height in that back. Uh, zone, and that's why phase two have have four stories and sixty two feet.
We actually don't have a rendering of what. From Maple Street. Of what you can see of of the trees.
Uh.
That would be an interesting sketch.
We we certainly can do that. And we actually do have that uh for for the concept report, but it was. It was sort of standing at the edge of the, the Maple Street corner, looking at our project rather than looking.
So it would probably would be helpful. Uh, for your next community meeting to have, um. Uh, rendering that from the point of view of Maple Street, looking at the development. Of phase one A and one B complete.
Okay. Uh, next slide, please. So um the site plan is is what you saw earlier, I just, and and here. I'll I'll direct your attention to those sort of red dotted, I apologize that it is kind of confusing since we are sort of quasi engineering drawings. But these dotted. Boxes are based are the concept report, so really wanted to show. Where the sighting of concept report base building one A, the U shape, base one B. And then the current uh footprint of the building.
So it looks like there's still quite, quite a distance between the back of the houses on Maple Street. In the building.
Yes, that's correct. And as well as the the deciduous trees um on that back area. Is is helps to shield this this building.
Well, I think it would be about maybe ninety feet of trunk space.
There's ninety feet filled with the, you know, seventy five foot. Mature deciduous trees, so I can say if you walk down, you could do that now. Um, before the leaves fall and you look from Maple Street towards, and you really can't see anything.
Yeah, I mean, it's your journalist.
But, you know, the winter time, of course, you'd be able to see through the branches.
There are also, you know, one story buildings as opposed to four story.
True, but you can get an idea of what it would look like, you know, by, you know. So we'll, we'll do that.
Uh, and and two, two other things I will mention, there are two green spaces uh on on the site, one on the left, that larger green space. That we're working with our landscape architect to develop into a ma- amenity space for the residents. Uh, gardens, community gardens is is really important at Linden Chambers. So as well as a seating area, recreation, and so on, bocches, what have you. The one on the right. Uh, that we we have, there's discussions about this being a a having ability to to be potentially a future area where. Uh, it can be a a a retention basin, um, and and so on. As we know that there's recently, they are, there are floodings in this area. Uh, the 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 on the streets, so that green space, in addition to pushing this. Uh, new development as sort of far away, if you will, from the median neighbor, which is to the right. Just outside of the property line, and you'll see that in the aerial shot uh very shortly. Um, and and also could serve sort of having some opportunity in the future. That that's just a very preliminary idea.
It just, that was the August eighth event that happened with the five inches of rain, and this neighborhood. Um, it flooded from, the fields flooded, and there was about a foot to two feet of water. From our parking lot on this side where I'm showing you the arrow. All the way back to halfway up to Oak Street. So there's a sort of a basin there. And a very adequate storm sewer system, except that it got overloaded and couldn't get rid of all the water. Um, uh, to, you know, that came down so quickly in the thousand year event.
Was that flooding onto your property or just?
So it didn't make it onto our property, but it did flood several neighbors' basements, and you know, not very happy about that.
And 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 the new building, I mean, the existing buildings are slabs.
Yeah, it doesn't come from us, it came from upstream, there's Lake Street. Uh, you know, so it it all runs down from four directions. The Maple Street water goes right in, right in there as well, it goes, uh.
But the new building's in that basements.
No, we don't have basements.
No basements for utilities or anything like that, nothing.
No, there, this is going to be a slab upgrade, there's no basements, and all stormwater drainage will be retained on site. Or with a stormwater management system, which is required.
Yeah, just one, just one clarification, uh, that that uh detention basin is not something that. The housing authority is proposing as part of its project. Uh, this is land that could be made available to the town in the future. Um, to try to deal with uh area, area drainage. So you, your team has had some. Some discussions already, I think, with uh people in the DPW, but it, we. It it again, this is, this is not part of the project that's being proposed, uh, it's just land that's available should the town. Want to use it to deal with the area drainage issues.
Discussions is overstatement, you know, it's, it, you know, it's just. Um, there's a whole DPW uh wastewater and stormwater management. Analysis they're planning to propose at town meeting uh sometimes soon.
Gene, Paul, and Artie, do you have any other questions before we move on to the zoning on this, on the schematic design?
I do have questions. You know, since I live in a multifamily housing uh of a hundred and five units, I'm kind of familiar about how people move around. In a multifamily building. And so some of my questions go to that. And I uh must admit that, uh, I think in our packets, there may have been. Um, um, designs to show where the units were and.
Yes.
I I didn't get into that deep dive, but uh just let me ask. On the two elevators that are going to be on the phase one B, these one A, one B building. Where are the elevators located?
They're in the center.
They're in the center.
In in the center of between phase one A and one B.
So the per, uh, the residents, um. Would would have to walk from there to their units, uh, from each wing, won't they? Yeah. Um. It doesn't seem that long when I look at the number of units.
It's hundred and ninety feet.
Hundred and ninety feet.
At the end, that's on the.
And the toward the end, with the end of this unit. From that center board to the elevator. And and this discussion that you brought up is is really pertinent because of the elderly uh demographics. And so that distance, we we really tried to minimize that distance and part of. That logic drives the compact of the footprint of the building. And and so another way of saying this is if these were three stories, and because we need the efficiency. You would have approximately another, you know, hundred plus feet.
Okay, when I see the number of units one walks by, you know, if you had an empty unit, it it doesn't seem too far for me. Because you have, might have people on walkers and so forth, that's very important that they know I have to walk too far. Um, and where is the community uh room located?
Uh, if you go to the, I unfortunately do not have the first floor plan, but we have been uh working on this. It's it's right here.
Right in the middle.
That's correct, so.
Where you walk in.
Come in, drop off lobby mail area, elevators here. And then somebody, or sorry, amenity space, are here, the multi function.
And I I I have a copy of that if you want to show it.
Um, yeah, we we've been, as part of our development, we've been, one of the things, if you can go to the next slide, is that. There are still inefficiencies in the floor plate. That we want to really maximize and minimize the the building footprint. So there may be. Our current design is still sort of tweaking these things, but the the point is all central services. Are in the middle, you can page one A and one B.
For for a year, uh, my husband and I looked at Webster Green, and you've walked in, you know, sort of apartment building in Highland Avenue. You walk in and the community room is right off the lobby. And it's made for friendship, it's made for people saying hi. In a way that where I live now, the community rooms is a basement, it doesn't have that function, really makes a difference. And and I said, I like the location of the community room, I'm satisfied on the elevators, um. I understood, I mean, this may go more to the zoning, but um I understood that a hundred percent of the units would be affordable, is that correct? I understand, I mean, this may go more to the zoning, but um I understood that a hundred percent of the units would be affordable, is that correct? Okay, um it was said in your presentation that if you have two bedroom units. Are you would the rent would be higher, why would the rent be higher for a two bedroom unit?
HUD allows the rents to, um the HUD sets the rents by the bedroom sizes.
It does?
Yeah.
I never realized that.
And so a two bedroom rent rent would be um somewhere around four to five hundred dollars a unit more per month.
It it four to five hundred more per month and still staying below.
It right, so the resident would still be affordable.
Mm hmm.
Um to them, because it would, their portion of the rent would be based on their income, but the amount of subsidy the housing authority would get would be greater. For a two bedroom.
I understand.
And um, you know, I can tell you the the difference was about a half a million dollars in terms of what the project could support. And that, so that was one to the, and um there is a demand for two bedrooms, you know, folks who. Need a a a care assistance or or somebody uh to live with them, it's not an overwhelming need. So having a uh an introduction or a little added mix of two beds, I think was actually a good outcome as well.
Yeah, I mentioned, uh so a caretaker, would this, would those never be for a family like that?
No.
No, because it would be, this is kind of, I'll call it age restricted housing.
Even if the person is disabled and had a teenage daughter, they they couldn't live together in this development.
No, they would have a a other option than the housing authorities.
So it's only for single disabled people, could be.
It could be, it could be, it could be a partnership or, you know.
Something I've got, but no, okay, um is the attic space usable?
Yeah.
Uh no.
No, okay, it's just for the design.
Yeah, and that was more, the attic is kind of disappeared with the four story design. You know, Dan, what did you probably split the units into?
Right, so we sort of, uh we sort of uh in or inserted, if you will, fourth floor.
And uh can you remind me on in this part of, apart from the bungalows and all, um. What is the uh existing number of units? I've forgotten.
One hundred fifty two studio units.
One hundred.
That four hundred, four hundred, averaging four hundred square feet.
Okay.
Seventy two of those bungalow style. Which we call Linden Street, and then the eighty units are in chambers, which are those two stories, videos.
So it's going from one forty two, I mean, excuse me, one fifty two. Uh to including phase B will go to two forty seven, yeah, with phase two.
Not just one B, Gene, also things, also base.
Phase two, that's what, yeah.
So think, if you think about if um. Phase one and when A and B are built, that would be a hundred thirty six units until, and then meanwhile, eighty units would still be. Up in operational and chambers, and so then the the max count would be. If you put two sixteen, and then you'd only see the growth when chambers came down and then you build like for phase twos.
Okay, thanks for explaining that, yeah, um and uh oh I, you know, I have one more thing about um. Sitting out areas, the kind of green areas for social, for sociable, sociability. If I lived in the, there's one A, the one on the right, and I wanted to go outside and sit with. My friends and talk, um where would I go?
Uh if you can pull up the site plan again. Actually, we can go back to the cycling. Uh right here, so if you were living here in phase one A. You would, the lobby area, greens areas out here, there's a small lounge. Area that's immediately often was coming in, there's a large green space that's out in front. We we are still working with our landscape architect in the schematic design, we're showing a green here. It's actually divided into multiple sort of activities, whether it's for seating, whether it's for conversation, whether it's for barbecuing. Or what have you, so that space is being programmed with our landscape architect. For phase one A, this green space here is going to have.
Got a long green space, okay.
Right, so but as I said, there's going to be a a buffer zone between all the ground floor units that are aligned on this side. So that is why we kept aside the walkway to the parking side and created this buffer area, really is trying to.
It's more for a buffer area than it is for a sitting area.
And and but in certain areas, in parts of it where you can.
It could have a small sitting area.
Uh around area, a paving area with some benches and chairs, opportunities in both outside and inside.
And and the area that could be, um what do they call that when you have uh? The the water to go in and sit there with the flowers and everything, what was the one area? Rain garden. Um that might be a rain garden, it might also be a sitting out area.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so now I'm satisfied, everybody's got some outdoor places that I know that is.
And then I think even the back, the back side also is ample spots for people to be sitting on site as well. I know you've been focusing on the front with Linden Street, but I think the back has um the ability to be programmed.
Has the ability to, and we're not showing it now necessarily, um okay, um there I've seen. Figures on setback of eighty feet and eighty eight feet, which which is it?
It's eighty eight feet from this red line here. Which is the property line along Linden Street to the furthest point at that corner.
Oh.
That is eighty.
Oh, okay, so although the zoning might say the minimum uh setback is eighty feet, it's actually eighty feet. Is that correct?
Yes.
I thought I saw that, um okay, um now like. Will it, I mean, as as designed, or maybe the design hasn't got that far. Uh comply with the town's stormwater regulations?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the rain garden is just something, something extra, as you, as you said. Um I agree with that, we need the rendering of the view from Maple Street, um.
Both spring and both spring and summer.
You mean winter and summer?
Well, well, sorry, sorry, winter and summer.
Yeah.
So those are my questions for government design.
One last question, I guess, that I had is, well, you have that up. You have an opportunity in the middle of one phase one A. And kind of in that cutout area of phase one B, to have a path to walk to the parking lot. Instead of going through the lobby, it would be a much shorter access. Would you sound I'm saying, you want me to show you on the screen?
You mean there are doors at the end of the building?
If you could stay, stay where you were, again, the site plan, I'll show you. Why not have some kind of a walk path here and a walk path here in the parking lot?
That that's certainly possible, but are you saying walk through the building?
So that's why I went here, you're walking through the two bedroom apartment.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, but but at the very ends of the building, there there are doors only on one, on only on the building that's. Phase one A, that is a door at the end, correct?
Yes.
Phase one B does not have a door at the end, or it has a door in the middle.
It is, it it has it where where uh Adam was sort of asking about right there, there will be an exit. That's an emergency egress, so you know, that that for the stairwell.
Uh huh.
That's a stairwell there.
I see.
Where's the stairwell in phase one A?
It's on the right, and then they both share.
Oh, it's almost a.
A access stair on.
Yeah, okay, and so there's a stairwell all the way at the end of the building.
And and one is right here, and the third one's here.
And there's an exit from the building from that center area. I mean, exit from the building.
Yeah, through the lobby.
Yeah, yeah, fifty percent of the exit goes to lobby.
And then there'll be an exit to the back through the uh community room or through a different side door.
Yeah, and we were intentional about where we put the stairs in one B, just to try to. Uh give us an ability to do something to break at the by the side.
Um I I think we have many more slides and.
I'm just curious about the cost in the funding, you said that you reduced the cost from sixty five dollars to fifty five million. And so for that, um. Gives you the opportunity to have the funding, that sixty five million, you know, funding. So um how much of that fifty five million are you looking to the town and where where are the other funds coming from?
Wait, I want you to start with the where the other funds come from and how do we maximize that and then?
Yeah. Comes from the town and ideally it's as small as it can be, but. Um the this is a heavily project for a variety of reasons, so it's not going to sound like a small number when we get there. Um but the the big money comes from the long term modern tax credit, I think we talked about that last time. Um the second biggest part comes from the debt of a property support with. Um some of the section eight vouchers that will be um provided in there. Um another significant amount of funding will come from um the state. Um executive office of housing and available communities, former D H C D. Um where they'll um provide funding for the housing authority, because this will be moving from. State public housing program to the federal program, which takes the state off the hook for operating costs as well as capital class, so. They'll give you a chunk of change um to facilitate that, so a a big amount of money will come from from that. Um the new units about to be on what will be replacing, so we'd be replacing seventy two units at. And then we'll be adding new units to the inventory count, it also come from the executive office of housing and available communities, they give about eighty. Eighty five thousand dollars per unit of of soft loans um for that, so it's like you're 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 making, you're layering a cake.
So those are, those are loans that we pay back from the states, get a loan from the state. And the state pays the rent to pay back the loan?
No, it's a soft loan, so it's only, it's not.
It's a grant effect.
It's effectively a grant, yeah.
Okay, to not, you know, pay that loan back.
No, as long as you meet the conditions of the loan, which is the, you know, maintenance of affordability.
And what percentage are repayable loans?
Um the debt service would be repayable, um not going to be able to figure out quick enough in my uh my head.
All I mean is, is that roughly is the is the debt roughly forty percent of the total financing?
I would say in this instance, it would be closer to twenty percent.
Twenty percent, and that's that debt uh repaid by rent paid by the state.
Yeah, um by the federal government.
By the federal government, right, so I can reach the state with.
And um and you know, size with, you know, that, you know, you have to meet the underwriting requirements of a bank. So they're gonna be looking at, you know, do you have enough money to run the building, um or do you have enough um safety funds? And do you need that service participation, so it's all kind of stacked to make certain that if I run, when I'm in the financial.
And while appearing the lead, uh the percentage of the town is your plausible for?
So the percentage of the town would be probably close to, you know, CPA funds, close to about ten percent of the total cost. While that construction, but you gotta put there, you gotta pay Dan, so you know, say the the cost. Um it would be closer to about seventy million dollars when you when you round up. Uh all of the um soft costs that go into these transactions.
So the, just so I'm clear, um the seventy thousand dollars includes all the predevelopment and planning costs.
The seven.
Seventy million.
Seventy million, okay, yeah.
You have your.
I'm sorry, so uh so with seventy million, that includes.
Yeah.
Predevelopment.
Correct.
And uh and the ten percent would come from the town of that.
Uh it would be the total. Yeah, so I now I think we're at six point eight five.
And just to to give you an update, uh we are working out the final details of that. Based on the schematic design, uh the deadline this year for the CPC. Uh for a funding application is November first, they moved it up for a month. And so we'll be obviously submitting an updated application that reflects. A year's worth of work that we've done on the design.
They you're looking to get that in front of town meeting in May.
Correct.
And if I, did it, did the CPC already provide a million?
Yes, they provided one point three eight six million that is paying for them, yeah, part of it is paying for them.
Right, so roughly one point four million, that's part of the.
That's inclusive of the temporary.
The ten percent.
That you've already, we've already made a contribution.
Okay, okay. Anything else, Paul, before we get already? I'm I'm just just curious to what your finding is with construction. When when.
So we need to get, so we have to go in for a funding round with the, you know, some of the state funds will come outside of a funding round. Particularly the federalization funds, but the new unit funds will, we need to go through a competitive funding round. But to be eligible for that, we need to have our zoning in place. And we need to have our other funding in place, so that's why both the zoning processes. Time critical as well as getting in front of the CPA communities time, uh critical, so assuming everything goes well in May and. Um both of those uh at the ounce, and that would set us up for the um fall of twenty twenty four funding round. That we would hope that would deliver um the prior funds that we were looking for the um spring of twenty twenty five, so. When everything goes according to plan, then we'll be ready to ground in the summer of twenty twenty five.
And then, um how long would each phase?
Um we're projecting.
Sixteen months, sixteen months.
Working totals?
A total for phase one A and phase one B, we're around sixteen months, one B.
So it's like almost three years for phases one A and one B. And then so we're up in twenty twenty eight. And then another, and then, and then they talk about base two. So the seventy million is just for phases one A and one B. It's not for phase two.
No, that's all one A and B, and just to, you know, put it in context, so. You know, we're um you have to pay prevailing wage, because you the funding that comes. And requires that, so that adds to the project cost. Um where um the the construction pricing, you know, the pound of experience um has been um at the highest. Pricing, um uh hopefully that makes up correct, but we can't plan for that. And then the other strong wind against us is the interest rates, so the the combination, it's like the uh three, three strikes, we're not out. But it it does absolutely put pressure on these types of transactions, uh but the prevailing wage one is is significant.
Hopefully, within three years, we'll see some interest rate.
Yeah, and maybe even a flattening of the construction cost, you know. One of the things where the project will take advantage of is. Um last fall, the legislature, the government, uh passed, the government signed. Some procurement relief that allows housing authorities to step out of the one forty nine, one forty nine A public procurement. Process of how you prefer a contractor with the um um belief. That it's gonna save um somewhere between of twenty to twenty five percent, and that's actually reflected. In the end's number, so you if you were to think about if we were bidding, subject to one forty nine. One forty nine A, we would, we would be um even that much higher.
So, how many units are in phase one A and one B?
I mean, thirty six.
Wait, sorry, in phase one and phase one, and then how many in phase two?
One, one eleven.
One eleven. But remember, people are still living in chambers.
Right, and that.
One A and one B are alike, and they're going forward on base two. Right, as you said, one A, are are all those units taken taken down, the existing ones gone?
No, the idea, you know, in facing in the building also has been um taken into account how how.
So that's why you need a lot of.
Yeah.
Or outlines of the existing limb, limb, and this is the current parking lot. Phase one A will take approximately six, four to six of the existing, the remaining. And state, including the community room currently and the facilities, and these eventually on this side also stay. So the goal really is to find that balance, was the compact footprint that also helps aid to. Minimize destruction to the existence of.
Yeah, so less tenants need temporary relocation in this design than the concept.
And if phase two is unable to secure funding, then. Overall, we kind of lose almost twenty units.
No, you you still have, you right now, you're at a hundred and fifty two.
Right, but if phase one is a hundred and thirty six.
The eighty chambers unit still can operate, and those are our youngest units, those are built in nineteen seventy one, and they're actually structurally in better shape. Than the original.
So I assume you're building the core, the park is in the middle as part of phase one.
Correct, that's correct, so this is phase one.
Right.
And and you can sort of see chambers, the five chambers buildings, one to with the five. Relationship to phase one A and one B, so in that inch one, if phase two is not built, you have eighty units. In chambers of these five buildings and one hundred thirty six, then phase one A and one.
Yeah, so you go from one fifty two to two sixty.
Yeah. All right, Artie?
You're just at the wrong person, they really have us. Um so I'm just thinking of, you know, the common space and what Jean was kind of getting at, and that was, you know, we're doing, we're doing something that, you know. That everyone knows we we would likely have done a long time ago. That is do something that's empowering, be dignified and respectful and so forth. So that's, so that's kind of inside, inside the 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 unit. Um then this outside the unit, so so we're talking about the common space. It was before when it's two buildings, it was a total of maybe four thousand square feet, maybe I forget, but now it's one building. Combined now it's two thousand square feet for the, for all the population in there, is that enough space?
So we've talked about that a great deal with um um the N H A staff. Our current community room for the a hundred and fifty two units that we have is is fif- fourteen hundred square feet right now. Whereas the one A and one B uh uh community room part of the space, which is where most of the activities take place, is. About a little bit larger than that, but for less people. And then we'll have another uh space in the two, uh building two, phase two building here. So uh we've actually been thinking about that a lot and think that this actually works. We had more than we needed when we had two community rooms out in the two, so um that that has been looked at pretty carefully here.
And the other thing is, again, getting to the outdoor space, because Jean was even talking about that, making sure what do they have, where they can go? And like I said, call their own, but feel as though they're own. Is, you know, you talk about this, the space in front of one A doesn't really count, because that sounds like it's almost awful. So it doesn't really count, then there's parking, there's a sidewalk, there's a parking lot. The space to the right heading north, that pretend, and potentially that's going to be barren. It's not, it's not, I don't think you're gonna see it until you know what you're doing with it.
Yeah, I I I think it's part of the, as part of our landscape design, we're also looking at that area. If, you know, because it is a large green area next to one A, it's an opportunity.
But that was also potentially, potential for after the catchphrase.
That, that's correct.
So if you take a look at this, um again, very active discussions on this, but we have a net increase in green space. In this schematic design building to work with, you're usable, and the the retention basin area doesn't means that you know, every. You know, for most of the time, it can be used for stuff and and.
Well, retention basins are.
But that, we're not going to build that, that that's just something that for the future, you know, that is there, nobody's asked us to do that. And um and the uh the uh the being able to. Uh we have, if you think, look at, if you can look at the shadow footprint of the layout of all the one story structures that we have here, there are twenty buildings there. Um you know, it's much more usable and 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 uh available for group activities. We also have this um marshy area over here, so there's like, you know, like half of the site is towards. The the uh south here, up up the hill and so forth. You can see where the Chamber Street buildings, you know, are are infringing on that. So we think there's a good tremendous potential for all kinds of different kind, you know, usage, you know, to be built in at not a lot of extra cost.
And so, and so you're talking about cleaning gardens, which I think is an extraordinary idea to make sure that goes in. So the Needham Community Farm, as a lot of you know, they have some pretty good experience now.
Yep.
We're putting in community beds.
Yeah.
So.
And we have, we have beds ourselves, and we work, cooperate with them, they help us do that.
Existing now?
Yeah, existing now, so that that's a very high priority on the tenant residents to continue and be able to expand that.
And my apologies, man, I thought, I don't remember hearing something in the past where maybe it was one of the other directors or person cutting it up. They didn't really like the community.
It it's very, that's where things are today, and 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 it's very healthy.
Okay, so it's where we are today, that's where we are today.
Yeah, right.
All right, let's, it's, it's almost eight thirty, and uh you still have another agenda, and yet we got to deal with zoning. Uh this is the most fun part.
Exactly, exactly, that's why I got my.
Chart as small as possible.
Yeah, yeah, all right, so let me see if I can uh expand it here.
I said yes.
So um. And you know, it might be easier if I bring this up on the P D, that's not.
Like two slides later, you have it.
Yeah, we do.
It's a little bigger.
Okay.
But I am glad I have my magnifying glass. It really won't, it's not easy.
I just gotta look at it on the screen.
Well, why don't you start talking, let me get a as big a image as I can get here, um so uh let me.
Bob, why don't you go ahead and start with the zoning?
Well, okay, do you want to hear about the zoning article, or do you want to hear about the tables?
Yes.
So I myself, I have about eight questions to deal with zoning, uh and um. I don't know what my other colleagues have, having already reviewed it as well or not, but um. Do you want to start?
Yeah, I I guess my my preference would be to talk about the main uh the main uh zoning art. Um the way I've, the way I've drafted this, I, you know, I don't think we have a, I don't think we have a slide for it.
I do, I I'm, oh, not for the article, I can.
For the article, but Alex can pull that up from our packet. Okay, well, oh, sure, I'll hold on there for a second. And I.
Page thirty one about.
Thank you.
Six of uh six of my questions relate to the zoning.
I want fifty one.
Very much, what what page was that?
Thirty one, we have thirty one out of eighty two pages.
Catch it.
Yeah.
There we go. Okay, well, first page looks really nice.
Okay, so so what, uh the way I drafted this, um it's a new district, a- and the idea is to put all the requirements in one place. Um so that would include the use, include dimensional uh requirements, include parking requirement. Um the town has done this before, uh it did this for the me- the medical overlay district for the hospital. Uh they did it for mixed use one twenty eight, the overlay for multifamily. Uh town did it for the elder services district where Wingate uh is, is it still Wingate? It's something else now, isn't it?
No, I think it's still.
And and then the the um the highway commercial one for the Muzzy um uh a channel five property. All the requirements in one place, makes it a lot easier to read, among other things. Um so what what I've, we have drafted this, it's a new uh affordable housing district. Now, affordable housing units are defined in uh section one point three uh of the bylaw. Uh basically, it's at or below eighty percent of area median income. And can be included in the forty B uh subsidized housing inventory, qualified for that.
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
Don't we mean deeply affordable or and not just affordable? And that the subsidy is, the the market rate is less, or is, or is?
Deeply affordable means that it comes with like a section eight voucher, so that folks can still be between fifty and eighty percent of area median income and qualify. For a voucher, just that the the rent is based on their income. Where a a an affordable unit is a tax credit unit that doesn't come with a subsidy. So it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't matter what your income is, you have to be able to afford that tax credit rent. So for instance, the one bedroom tax credit rent is about sixteen hundred dollars in in the Needham area. And so you would have to have enough income just to for a landlord to rent to you that apartment.
For, for in the, in the private sector, you mean?
But as an affordable apartment, so those forty B apartments that are, you know, a percentage of the units that a a developer does that's affordable. That doesn't come with the subsidy.
Right.
Comes with a fixed rent. And so it basically excludes a lot of people from being eligible to rent that the unit, because they don't have enough income to pay unaffordable rent. And the deeply affordable comes not, comes with a a subsidy attached to the unit. So that a person um can pay based on their, on their income thirty percent. So at um Seabeds and Captain Robert Cook, which is federal public housing, folks with incomes up to eighty percent of area median income. Qualify, because that's the definition of low income housing. But the rent is based on their income, so there'll be some folks up at 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 Captain Robert Cook, in particular the family site. That are close to or or nearing that eighty percent, and they'll be paying close to two thousand dollars a month in rent. Based on thirty percent of their income. If they were to um find a a department, uh and a tax credit in a um property that didn't have the subsidy, they would be just paying. The tax credit rent, which could likely be higher than the thirty percent of their income.
Um may I follow up, because I'm I'm not sure I fully understand uh this, um um. So what percent of the units, the one program or another, will be deeply affordable?
So uh right now, we're, we're um, we're um projecting a hundred and sixteen of the hundred and thirty six will have. A subsidy attached to them.
Okay, subsidy attached.
Yeah, which is the key, the key that makes it deeply affordable. But right now, the economics are such that we can't, and it's dependent on how can you find subsidies to attach to units? Um we're, we're running the other twenty units at the tax credit rent, that's sixteen hundred dollars per unit or month.
And and so they, uh what's the difference, the other units, how many of those?
Are section eight or not?
They would be section eight eligible, eligible, it would be just the person would need to bring the section eight with them, a mobile voucher.
Rather than requiring me to do the subtraction, how many units is that?
It's approximately twenty.
Twenty, okay, and they would be essentially section eight units.
And they would be tax credit units.
Tax credit.
That section eight uh voucher holder could rent. But also someone who had income around fifty percent of area median income could also rent.
I'm confused, of a hundred units, eighty are eligible for the section eight?
So of of a hun- of a hundred and thirty six units, a hundred and sixteen of them would would have a subsidy attached to the unit.
Which includes the section eight.
Which includes some section eight, but also some federal public housing subsidy.
Basically, they're the deeply affordable.
Those are the.
Then eighty percent of the deeply affordable.
Yeah, well, a hundred and sixteen of one thirty six.
Sixteen units of a hundred and thirty six will be deeply affordable.
And then the remaining.
The other twenty.
Twenty will just be affordable.
Will just be affordable.
Which means you have to, the eligibility criteria is eighty percent of the area.
No, that, yeah, and they and they would be affordable to people at fifty percent of area median income.
So not eighty?
Not it, but but eighty is is a threshold of affordability for any number of 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 um. Of affordable housing programs, is the tax credit, the tax credit unit is sixty, is a lower threshold.
So what I'm wondering is, Bob.
Yeah.
Which is why I had the question, should we modify the definition of affordable? For, to make a distinction for this district?
Yeah.
So that it's not really applicable, so it, you know, so it's not to impose other restrictions. And cause unintended consequences in our other districts.
Well, that can, that can be done, I I'd be interested in where where the board, what the board thinks about that, and then I think we all have to confer. I mean, we can certainly draft some different language and create a new definition in the definition section, that's doable.
I think what, I think it makes sense to define the thing.
I just took, I just took what was easy, because.
Oh, yeah. Which, 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 which makes sense.
Right.
And man, you didn't even get three minutes into the zoning already into it.
I'm sorry.
But but it just, it, I think it's worth flagging, that as we perfect the zoning of the thing. Um but the debt, we need clarity in the definition and the significance of those definitions.
Yeah.
Okay, to ensure the greatest advantage for the district. Without unintended consequences to our other districts that include. Other forms of affordable housing in the public sector and the private sector.
Would it, would it be the board's, would it be the board's preference to have a definition? Um that you'd make all the units deeply affordable? Uh I mean, I I understand we might run into some financing problems if we did that, and so that's the, that's the constraint on the other, but I'm interested in what the, what the board's preference on that is.
May I respond? Um because I, I think what's missing in the uh zoning is the idea that one hundred percent of the units. And I I I think we can use our definition, it's in our bylaw, and I think that does satisfy your concerns. To it, uh, or we've paid, um but there's nothing here that says that a hundred percent of the units should be affordable, and I think that's what makes this.
I think that's a very important.
Yeah, so I think we have to be careful to include some words to that effect in the zoning.
I also want to talk about whether it's it's senior housing or or family housing.
Yes, that's right, we don't say anything about it being this particular z- area being for seniors or disabled persons.
To carry over the deed restrictions into a zoning format, right?
Only I think it is describing of who the occupants are, there's age restricted housing was happening.
Right, but that's because of the deed restrictions.
What deed restrictions?
Yeah, exactly.
No, actually, there's just a senior age in the old deeds, and it doesn't mention the disabled at all. Because that had not been ruled out.
That came about through town meeting, I think.
Correct, and that's something.
That were imposed by both of town.
Correct, and we will be talking to the um town council and town manager's office, that court about. Whether there's a a a fourth zoning article, a third zoning article that's needed to kind of.
A non-zoning article.
Yeah, adjust the uh deed to conform the deed restrictions to what the town wants now to do.
But I, but I do think in this zoning for this site, uh we should express this say that it's assuming some, um whatever the, whatever the, you know, I think. Whatever the definition is in the.
The one hundred percent is, I think, the thing that was. Would, you know, so, you know, and couple that with the one hundred percent, I think that would be the distinguisher that would make it um. Nearly impossible, if not entirely impossible, for somebody to try to rule this out under a location or have some unintended consequences. Because it's very difficult to do a a hundred percent affordable um property and make the economics work.
Well, I mean, what we're getting at, we know what Adam was talking about, was the the phrase affordable housing.
Yeah.
When we use it, so so many other places, we we just don't, we don't want that.
Right.
Encoupled.
Right.
With what's going on in the rest of town, and also, you know, not that anything else, not not that anything else is ever going to occur at this property. But we want it to be zone defined correctly.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll think, we'll think.
We'll analyze, we'll, we'll think about that.
Yeah.
All right, want to have some language?
So those are, that's one of Adam's eight questions or two?
I got some more, but.
All right.
But I, they started in the threes, so.
Oh, okay.
When it's my turn again, I.
Oh, all right, so. Well, if you want me to continue, the next, the next point is that what what I'm talking about, what we're talking about creating here is is an affordable housing district. Uh and and we want the use to be of right. Uh but subject to um site plan review. Um you know, whatever's going to be done here is certainly going to be a major project, so you have to go through that. You would have to go through that site plan uh review process, there would be public notice, there would be hearing. Uh there'd be um pretty detailed requirements on, you know, from in in the site to interview section of the bylaw. About what information you actually have to provide uh with 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 the application. Uh and a, and there's a, there's a, there's a, a pretty expansive um set of standards uh from. Site plan review section of bylaw, section seven point four. Um. Just sort of going quickly.
Can I just ask a question there?
Yeah.
And I, I know, Bobby, you know, I didn't have a chance to talk about this, I'm sorry.
Yes.
About this, but um I think you also mentioned that you're allowing uses in the underlying districts here.
Uh I I'm not, I'm not, I'm not wedded, I'm not wedded to that at all.
I didn't understand that at all.
I mean, that can be, that can be taken right out, I I don't have a problem uh with doing that.
Underlying district, single residence?
Well, no, the underlying, the underlying, the the property is 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 bisected. And uh a a portion of it is um is single residence, single residence A. Uh and the other, the other part of it is general residence.
Okay.
Okay.
And the current, the current use is allowed, why?
Uh well, I think current use is allowed by virtue of some variances.
Okay.
There were, there were actually, um I think the housing authority was established in nineteen forty eight or something like that. There was a state, there was a state law in Needham, created a a housing authority. Um and after that, the um, the town. the town, uh, the the town conveyed a number of parcels between nineteen, in the fifties and sixties and early elevens. Um, which has been assembled over time into this parcel, which is just a, which is just over eleven acres. Um, but the town, you know, the town, the town meeting authorized, uh, you know, the select board to make these conveyances and and.
With these restrictions.
With various, with with numerous restrictions, uh, in terms of a number of stories, uh, number of units. Um, so, and and also.
Granted variances in order that they.
And then, and then, and there were also series of variances to why, I I don't know, there there were there were variances, there were variances that followed uh each each of these, each of these conveyances, which also contained, uh, you know, restrictions. There are also restrictions, it's supposed to be uh housing, uh, housing to the elderly.
I think he's got a good point, I think it makes sense to just have a new district and get.
Yeah, I I just.
Get rid of the underlying seems, single residence A and general.
That's not, that's not a problem.
And that's what's presented here.
Yeah.
No, because. When sixteen point four, he's talking about allowing uses that are allowed as of right in the underlying zoning business.
Yes, right. Right. And uh, yes, I think it's very confusing.
It's not a problem to take that, what happened is the drafter kind of ran out of time. Because, because I I, you know, I I had, I had started out suggesting an overlay district. Uh, and I was persuaded over time that it made sense to have, to have a different uh, but it was not an overlay, but a sort of, sort of a stand, a standalone.
District.
District, and so what I did is I went to the elder services district, uh, section of bylaw, and I just kind of followed that format, and this not by the, this got in, I haven't really given any thought in particular to.
Is the elder law, um, is the elder services district an overlay or is that?
It's an underlying district, but we chose, but we chose to retain some of the underlying uses.
Okay, right.
And it doesn't make sense in this case.
Yeah, it's, we we don't, it's not needed here.
And if I can, if I may comment at this point, because I do, uh, I'm going to make here um, that I thought what you were trying to protect was the, with the existing buildings, which don't comply with setback and so forth, and I believe I I I don't want to say, this is my little opinion, please, but um.
But you are a lawyer in the beginning.
I was, I was, nine years ago, but uh that, those are protected by the variances, there's nothing that takes away those variances.
That's correct.
So they are protected, to the extent that, you know, you're only doing A and B and the other one is going to sit there, fine. And in that A and B is in phases and, you know, it doesn't comply with the setup, fine, so you you agree with that.
I agree with that.
Then there's nothing to be said about a hundred, an underlying district or protect, protecting existing uses.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
But.
But you know, keeping, you know, you you raise an interesting point, because uh you're maintaining the um the protection, the the non, I mean, protection of those variances is important, because, you know, I I haven't really thought through or talked with the select board or town council about the non-zoning article. But I I was, I I was, I I was thinking that that, that, and this, this is something that has to be worked out with this title council, with financing council, what language they need to see. You know, so we're going to be able, we're going to be able to actually fund this project, lawyers are going to be looking at this. Um, you know, we we could either, uh uh, you know, one one option was was would be simply to have the select, ask the select board, uh, and have town meeting authorize them to simply basically wipe out all of those old, all of those old restrictions.
Right.
But it seems to me that we want, we need, we we need to keep in something that that continued that protection for the existing buildings, yeah.
We need to make it clear that uh, that they, whatever however you word it, that it does not affect variances issued by the zoning board of appeals on sessions that you date for this land. Um.
Why do we need to do that? If the zoning is going to supersede all of that, why is that necessary?
Well, the buildings.
We're still five years away from doing anything about the Chambers Street property, so we don't want, we need to continue.
The zoning, my understanding is that the intent of the zoning is to provide relief in order to, uh, in in order to enable the development.
Hmm.
So if that's the case, my my concern, my my.
Phase two isn't going to be built for years.
But it doesn't matter.
Yes, it does.
But the zoning is in place that allows that, that allows.
No, they don't comply with setbacks, et cetera, the existing buildings that.
But we're going to, but we're going to create it, if the zoning by law creates.
Um, I I believe.
But the existing, the existing buildings won't conform to the, to what has been drafted for this, they become non-conforming buildings.
And they, and they don't even become, the protections of state and local law for non-conformity. Things that were built via a variance, uh, do not have that non-conforming status, I understand.
Right.
Um, they, if if one needed to change and went back, you'd have to, you'd need to amend the variance. You can't rely on uh, uh, ex- extensions of non-conforming structures or changes of a non-conforming uses and and what seems to be, uh, uh, Chinese man seems to be agreeing.
Right.
So I think we just have to make very clear that the existing variances stay in place protecting the existing buildings for as long as they stay there. And um, and this zoning is for the new buildings.
Even though the district is going to include where phase two is going to be.
Right.
Right.
That's the current zoning.
I mean, I think in the interest of time, this is an issue that needs to be looked at more carefully and analyzed and bring, uh, you know, the benefit.
Right, and and, you know, like I said, I I want to talk with with title council, possibly the financing council, I want to talk with Chris Heep and figure out the best way to address, you know, what's on, what's, 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 what's already on record.
The town have a title council or is there somewhere?
No, I'm talking about.
I mean, we will make recommendations and explain them and and.
So that's, that's.
Yep.
Right now, it's just a placeholder, there's a lot of conversation needs to take place.
That was helpful.
Uh, so anyway, uh, continuing on with the, continuing on with the zoning. So, um, basically what's proposed here are and then there's a, there's a, there's a series, there are a series of dimensional uh empty parking requirements. And there, they track, they track what um, what what Dan showed in his chart, it's it's impossible to read.
I've got a larger size that is possible to read, if you want to look at it, that compares, you know, everything in a series of columns.
But but they, you know, the minimum lot area ten thousand square feet, minimum lot frontage, uh, eighty, um I I think I put. I think for eighty, 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 eighty feet, minimum front setback thirty.
I want to pause on that for a second.
Yes.
Your buildings are, your buildings are eighty eight.
Yes.
At its closest point to the property line.
Right.
Why can't we ensure in the zoning that we go, you know, to change the thirty to eighty feet?
We we want to, we want to, we want to leave ourselves some room, because we don't know what we're going to hear when we go out to the community. Uh, and and I I I think after we've heard from the community, we're probably going to, we're probably going to suggest a different number than thirty feet. What we want to hear, because if 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 we get, if the reaction is an overwhelming we're not, we we don't want four stories, we don't want this, we don't want this kind of height. Um, then we've got to go back to the drawing board a little bit and 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 figure out what might actually work on the site. And if you can't go up, you want to keep the number of units and you can't go up, you've got to go out. And we'd have to think, you know, so we don't know exactly what that would look like.
I mean, I I suppose no one has a crystal ball, and yet I would be, if you started with an eighty foot setback. I don't think anyone would want to reduce that to thirty feet.
No, that's right, but but my point, my point being that we might need it to be something less than eighty feet. If we're limited in, if we're limited in terms.
You gotta remember something, Adam, because of the wetlands, they can't go back.
I understand that, yeah, I understand that.
But as we just learned in some litigation, um, if we demand a setback that's greater than the minimum setback of one thirty feet, um, we we might be outside the scope of site plan approval.
I think that's right.
Yeah, but I.
So I think, I think we, the design is eighty feet, we should have.
We've got a case, get the name of the case now, there is a case that says for site plan review you can require a setback that's greater than the minimum setback, it's the Dover amendment. It's a decision under the Dover amendment.
Oh, I see.
That the judge said, you can't do it.
Okay.
But there is a case that was a pure site plan review, non Dover amendment. And I believe it was an appeals court case.
Okay, good.
Where the court.
Yeah, I read about.
Court said you can require the setback to be greater than the bylaw setback.
I'd be interested in seeing that case, because I, you know, I I took that, I borrowed Lee's volume of of Browski, I made copies, and I, and I actually read all of those cases. And none of them said, none of them said what you just said.
It's, I think it's Muldoon.
Muldoon, maybe it's a Land Corps case, I don't know.
I'm gonna look at it right now.
But another sign, what doesn't help us, but I also imagine us defending this in front of town meetings.
Sure, absolutely.
And um, and saying thirty feet is the setback, what? It should be setback one that.
Right.
Right.
I I I really.
Those are. That's right, and and I, like I said, I I think it's likely this, that this number is going to change. But we need to get out to the public and hear what they have to say.
Before.
Before we advertise for a hearing?
Before they finalize.
The advertising, advertising for a hearing is not until when, January?
January.
Oh, yeah, before that, we're 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 planning to meet.
Going out this month.
In the next, in the next month.
We have a of of, you know, six meetings in our en- envisioned at this point.
Yeah, we we have various town boards that we want to meet with, that we haven't met with yet, so we're going to get a lot of input.
I have a question for Dan. And you don't have to bring up the slide, but you might be able, you might know it. What's the, what's the depth of the building? From the front edge to the rear edge of, let's say, phase one.
Fifty, fifty eight.
Fifty eight feet. So if the, if it was determined that it should be three stories and not four stories. You're at almost ninety now.
We're we're at two hundred right now.
So I mean, you're at, you're at almost ninety feet setback.
Yeah.
Based on the current design.
Yes.
But if you know, if it became clear that, you know, that's a four stories and the height was too high, and people instead, you know, could support three stories. Then you know, how um, how much more frontage, how much more square uh uh front setback? You know, would you need, if you're at, in other words, if you're at ninety now, rounding up from eighty eight? And you've got half of one story, would you roughly twenty five? So ninety minus twenty five is, is that sixty five?
The the issue is gaining light, so it's not about adding depths to the bar of the building, because what we need, there's a matching number in terms of how deep the units are before you lose the perimeter light, a bedroom has to have light, a living room has to have light. And so.
Right.
And and so in your speculative scenario, I just think about that, is that you will have to, if it's a three-story, maintaining the same density is increasing the length of the building bar. Because of the elderly development, you are walking from hundred and ninety feet to two hundred and ninety feet. In a three-story building.
Or it has to be something similar to the first one.
Which then. You do a U shape or a L shape, which then increases the intensity of the building.
Right.
By approximately three, four thousand square feet.
And and ten million dollars.
Easily, because it's five hundred fifty dollars a square foot, at two thousand square feet, that's close to ten million, or a million dollars right there. So the the numbers are are unforgiving in today's environment, this is why we we have such drastic change from two U buildings to a linear bar building.
Are are you saying when, if it goes to a U building, it's going to be a lot more square footage?
It's going to be about four thousand square feet premium, in, because the re-entron corners are really hard to use. Precisely put the problem of the depth to the window perimeter ratio.
And so then we look at an L-shaped building, to see how we could make that efficient. And then we can't, we came down, at one point, we had, you know, them attached here and then we've been, the geometry we've been going through.
Yeah, well, I think there's one more point that I've been learning about during this process, which is reducing the size of the building from a hundred and forty-four, a hundred and thirty-six, by lopping off the floor counterintuitively makes it more difficult to fund.
Yeah.
And that is because the apartments that you're lopping off are the ones that bring in the most revenue. Because you have to provide the deeply affordable housing, you have to replace the seventy-two units.
Then you can, but you reduce, you can proportionally reduce the whole thing and still be financially eligible.
Well, so.
So the, you, it, what happens is you you have to maintain the seventy-two as equally affordable. And and in doing that, um, those, those are some of your lower rents. And so if you bring the number down, your average rent goes down, and so the amount of money that you can actually borrow this, you know, goes down pretty quickly, very, very fast, because as Rex said, you're lopping off some of the units that have um, the most potential rev, that are generating most of the revenue. Cause the seventy-two units will be, you know, um, they'll be at let's say seventy-five percent of the HUD FMR, that's how their rents will be set, and the subsidy will be based on that. And you need to have the rents at, at the balance of the units at that hundred to a hundred and twenty percent of section eight FMRs and HUD FMRs to make up the difference and to keep the finance and higher balance.
So all the way through the schematic design period, we were only, you know, trying to squeeze space and cost out of the building. Um, but then we were continuously modeling it to see if that, how that affected.
What did it look like at one hundred and eight, what did it look at a hundred and eighteen, what did it look at? At e- every different kind of number level to try to find.
Well, well, if we compare, if we compare the height of them, uh, there's only a few feet difference, if you're looking at purely, purely the height. Not that the other one could have been an eight-foot ceiling as well, but just one first to this, that's, we're talking a couple of feet.
Mm-hmm, you know, with two feet, you're also talking about a difference of, what was the setback of the, of the concept design?
Twenty-five.
And so you tripled that.
Well, yeah, that was.
With only a two-foot increase in the structure.
Yeah, I mean, and that concept will go way too close, we need that, but, but yeah, it's.
I mean, we're kind of, we're kind of in the Goldilocks zone uh of, you know, balancing all these different uh, factors, and now we're ready to test it, you know, you know.
I understand.
Community.
So are you, well, just just going, just going through the rest of the dimensions, the mix of may.
Yeah, I'd I'd like to go through the rest of the dimensions, some of them, I think.
I have that.
Okay, so.
Right for this side.
So what what I proposed here on, in terms of side rear setback was uh twenty feet. Um, the minimum floor area ratio, um, twenty-five. Uh, maximum dwelling units per acre, um, twenty-five. Is what this, what this would uh work out to, it's actually twenty-four and a fraction, I believe.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Right. Um, maximum.
So you're really you're putting a requirement in which you write the maximum of what you're going to have.
Which, which, yeah, in in terms of maximum, that would be the maximum, an upper limit on the, on the number of units per acre. You're proposing, you're proposing a limit of twenty, we're proposing a limit, we're proposing a limit of 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 twenty-five units per acre.
And you're delivering roughly twenty-three.
Uh, twenty-two point four, that's.
You're going to be adding about twenty-three.
Yeah.
Units per acre for for both phases one and two.
Uh, it it's all, all the phases.
You want to give yourself a little bit more breathing room and have more than twenty-five?
Oh, it's just a question, what, I I I'm not sure that we need it, to be honest with you, is there any reason we would need more than twenty-five? Or eight? I don't see why we would need it. We're not talking about increasing the number of units over what we're talking about.
Um, but we, you must have mentioned, but um, I I have questions and about the minimum lot area and the minimum lot frontage. Um, I have a minimum lot area, lot, lot area of ten thousand square feet is just way too small to be reasonable. Uh, I'm looking at the minimum lot area for apartment A one, it is twenty thousand square feet. On North Hill, it's a, it's an acre. Um and of course your property. I think it should at least have twenty thousand square feet.
That would not cause any any.
And then the same thing with frontage, eighty feet. Um apartment A one is a hundred and twenty feet, on North Hill is a hundred and fifty feet, you just raised that to something reasonable.
You mentioned that there are other projects that are going to be done.
Yes.
Is this gonna be a template for the zoning change which you might need for those other projects?
You know, we talked about that and it's very speculative, the the uh we're not really building anything at Seabed. And Cook for a long time. So, you know, and then over in High Rock, there's already zoning in place that allows for multifamily duplexes. That was put in place when we did the High Rock Homes redevelopment. And whatever would be done there, it it may be just more sixty more duplexes, it might be something else. But it's not really related to the characteristics of what we're doing. Uh you know, it's family housing, it's not senior housing.
So this is really specific.
For this, yes.
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
But to Paul's question, do you anticipate additional zoning by law changes for Cook and Seabeds?
We don't know.
It's really hard to know just.
But you know, all of the um meetings, community preservation committee. Um I understood that what was posed is substantial rehabilitation.
Right.
Uh and preservation, which is the magic word in the Community Preservation Act. And that would not require any any zoning change, which is not changing anything, you're just rehabbing.
Is if that's Adam's question, I answered the question ten years from now, if we. We're talking about now.
Okay, so. I I want you to, you want units per acre of twenty five, um maximum. A lot coverage twenty five percent. Um maximum height, we have, we have fifty eight feet. Um you know, what's? What we're what we're what we're thinking about is fifty three, but we want to leave ourselves some room because we're not positive that's going to work. Um maximum number of stories. Four.
Yeah, you're not gonna have any political uh will to.
Do you have to, do you have to say four and a half, you're going to have those addicts? We usually.
No, because it's included in the fourth story. There that fourth story of residential units is baked into what would otherwise have been the the attic space, okay?
That that's correct, and so it's it the operative word is occupiable versus unoccupable. So the height, two fifty three feet includes quote unquote unoccupable attic space.
I I thought for even our single family homes, don't we have a half story, three and uh?
We have a half story.
Two and a half stories.
Well, we, well, I think it probably gets the the definition of the floor constitutes a story.
What is a story?
Between any floor other than a basement and the floor or or roof next above.
So.
So this this attic wouldn't be a story, so we don't need. Oh, and there is a definition of half story.
Yep.
Um for all single family detestor and two family and apartment and multifamily dwelling. Um that push and building including the precipice and then sloping roof above. And if it has a finished ceiling, had to exceed exceeding five feet. Well, this won't have a finished ceiling height at all. Assuming five feet.
Well, I don't know, I I think this might fall into the last sentence of that core section. It wasn't one of the excluded areas that says for all other buildings, the definition is that part of a building under a sloping roof. Where the full, where the full length rafters rest on the top beam of the story below. Tell me, is that?
Maybe.
They get four and a half.
Maybe make it four and a half.
They get four.
Really?
We've got a definition, we've got a definition of half story here that is like, you know, a third of a page.
Well, no, I think, but the part that applies to him is just the last sentence, which is what I just said. So if it's under. For the full length rafters rest on the top beam of the story below is considered a half story.
Yeah.
And I don't know what.
We'll take a look at it.
But we're giving you a height of fifty eight. On fifty eight feet at the max.
Yeah.
As we asked before, yeah, so why are we then going to four and a half stories now?
Because they're they're building a four story building that has an attic, that has a pitched roof and an attic. That might that might fall within the definition of a half story. And if our maximum is four stories and we're building something that by our definitions is four and a half stories. It doesn't comply with the zone.
Yeah, but but isn't there something, how are we also defining it as, you know, it has windows, it's living space?
No, no, no. As I said, the definition is is a third of a page.
We just say that Lee Newman and.
Well, we'll 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 we'll.
Take a look at it. It's a question.
Uh it's a good question.
Are you, you okay with your question there?
Well, I think Bob, they they did something like that.
I do want to say with regard to site plan review, um shouldn't we look at our site plan review? Section and see if it needs revision uh in light of this project.
Yes, and I and I and I noticed that we, and also this doesn't have any procedural requirements in it, and I assume you probably.
Makes reference to.
Yeah, it does, but the one section that doesn't pick up is the section that talks about process.
The same way.
Which is which is the section I think, Gene, we need to look at in there.
Yeah, and and uh this that was.
Oh, no, there's a definition, there's a there's a there's a definition. Gene, there's a definition here. If if we look at three point one six point three definitions, my third definition is a definition of site plan review. And it's defined as the site plan review process as provided in section seven point four. That an applicant must obtain for any A H D pro uh project. So I think the, you know, that it's like the note, the notice and hearing provisions, um the submission requirements, the review standards. Are all are all incorporated in it by by doing that.
No, it doesn't, well, the six seven four three, I think it picks up the process under four year.
Right, so it's in seven seven point four.
Yes, it's in seven point four.
But pertaining to the site plan review process in the um section three point sixteen point eight. For which is site plan review, um was it under major project add a new paragraph after the paragraph defining a major project. Um I don't, I just don't understand why we need a special paragraph. Because. Yeah, doesn't, isn't that? Isn't a minor project already defined in site plan review?
It is, there's a definition of minor project, it's just a smaller project.
Just don't understand why, I mean, this, this isn't a smaller project than ten thousand square.
No, that's right, this is a major project.
Yeah, it fall, like, within the current definition of major project, it's a major project.
Correct.
Why do we need a new definition?
What?
And it says under minor project, add a new paragraph after the paragraph defining magic minor project.
But it's the same.
The bottom of page three of your proposed zoning. I just don't understand.
Okay, wait a second, where are we here? It's about the story, I right, I right.
I think you can probably just grab the interesting definitions. Cause I think you intend to have.
Yeah, that's right, that's what I was intending to do, but you you're right, I I I don't. Well, let's think about this, it's 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 possible, I suppose, that this project gets built, right? And 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 then uh at some point in the future, the housing authority comes back with some small addition. That would 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 be a minor project. So I I I think it's, I I think it's useful to include to 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 include it here.
Now, I was. You're reminding me that I was confused because your definition of. What you're adding under major project reads the same as minor.
Yes, exactly, that was my comment.
Affordable housing, a major project is defined as any project which involves the construction of more than five thousand.
Exactly.
Yeah, that was my, okay.
Don't you mean more than ten thousand?
I'll fix that, I think I, my, I must, I as much as skip them, I I went back over the thing.
You're forgiven. You mean you're not, oh, that's perfect? So, so I had. I'm gonna bang through quickly my questions here on the zoning. Um one is you have three point one six, I think the whole section should read three point one seven. Because last town meeting, we modified one of the two three point one fives to three point one six.
We did?
Yeah, correctly.
Right.
So, okay, so this show up, I'll be three point one seven.
Correct. And then, uh and another question about the underlying district, but we're we're resolving that by creating a new district.
Right.
Um three point one six point four C. Um. So the following. There it is, right? Three point one six, let me see, the following usage maybe can. Oh, where you say, I, projects after site plan review is provided in seven point four. Should we say after site plan review is completed and a decision is rendered? Or if we say it as it is, as provided in section seven point four?
I could certainly say after site plan review is completed.
Yeah, okay.
Something like that.
Yeah. Uh three point one six. Eight. Mentions performed. And I think it probably should. Should either be like completed with a vote of decision, there should be another, not just performed.
Yeah, that's an important.
I had another question, and this might be for you, I remember you represented before that. All of this needed to happen, these dimensional regulations needed to happen by right. As Bob noted initially in his presentation tonight and previously. But I don't. Why, why is that?
I'm prior to the applica, for us to be eligible to apply for the funding, the zoning needs to be in place. If there's still.
Piece of funding requires it to be by right.
That is the.
Tax credits or?
It's the D H C B money, um and the tax credits, which also flow through D H C D. So the zone, so for us to be eligible to apply for the funding, we that we either have to have the zoning in place. Or or a path to get to the, like, you can have the zoning in place and still go through a, the special re, the review process. But you can't go through the special permit process. Process, but you can't go through a special.
Special permit process, right.
You know, but you, right, to to be eligible, you just, you know, you you have to have the basic part of your zoning complete and be eligible to move.
I understand that, what I would like to see is some verification of that. In the application source as provided and you can just see.
I know, it's very clearly in the language, the state issues out of qualified allocation plan. Um for that really define the application process with the scoring metrics is that they have, so we can. I'll give you uh the citations of that.
Right.
And that language.
And then the last question I had, I think we may have addressed, I'll be very quick, but I think we need to. Include in the zoning, uh that for the two bedroom apartments. That there is restriction in occupancy for, you know, for living assistance.
Well, that's what, that's what we had talked about before.
Well, why can't you have, why can't you have two elderly sisters share a two bedroom apartment?
Yeah, and then you also, uh physical care attendant could be someone who is under sixty two. Um who's providing services to the head of household, who is eligible and qualified for a two bedroom. It means the diff, in that household, means the definition of an elderly household.
Because of the caregiver or because of the home?
Because of the head of household.
I mean, you have your own defining process of who's gonna be in there.
Yeah.
And it's very, it's very.
Right, you can dictate, or you you can, you can have a a personal care attendant, but they have to be over sixty two. Now, that person is gonna be whoever they're able to secure.
And it could be many people.
Correct.
Yes, but they need to have an open.
Yeah.
Sorry, just one here.
So the affordability provisions will take care of that, will take care of. If it's two bedroom and a certain number of two bedrooms as long as they are for seniors and disabled and affordable.
Take it, the caregivers income will not be factored into.
And the ca, and the caregiver.
Accords to federal regulations.
And the caregiver who is an occupant.
They may not be an occupant, they may not, it may not be party to the lease.
Right, but regardless of what, but there. But the point of the two bedroom apartment as opposed to a one bedroom apartment is that someone's gonna occupy the second bedroom.
Right. When you have somebody who needs twenty four hour daycare, people. Um and still be there.
He's fine with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I understand.
He's fine with that, he he's saying if it's not a caregiver. Who's gonna be in the second bedroom if it's not a caregiver?
Well, we.
I'm I'm hearing you say that you want to limit it caregivers.
No, I, it's also, also to, I just want to include the deed restrictions. That exist of, that existed prior to our zoning by law change. The deed from the variances, from the deed restrictions, from town meeting, all of that stuff. To ensure that they're included into the, you know, into the zoning. To, you know, um.
We don't want to just limit this to elderly though, that's what that's what the deed restrictions say. It's one of the things.
Don't include disabled right now. Deed restrictions right now is solely.
Elderly, low income individuals.
It's not defined, it's not gonna be defined by our bylaw. Who they are. Now, does that, but that caregiver, that can be on the the deed of the rent.
But that, if that that caregiver. That allows the caregiver to be twenty five years old. Right, so I'm trying to create a scenario that protects that.
That person.
That's what I mean, so in other words, except in the case of a caregiver. I got phrased it correctly in the beginning, but I want to ensure that, because if what, if we. Exactly, we have, exactly right, if we have a restriction that they have to be either of a certain age. All occupants have to be of a certain age or or disabled.
Well, let's back up, then why, why is that? Why is that requirement, and I assume that it's a requirement that outside of our deed restrictions. For the Needham Housing Authority, for what you're planning to build, for the requirements that are, you know, consultant is working with you on. You need the restrictions of it's being limited to low income elderly, low income disabled. Am I correct there? Or can you have?
We don't need that language.
You don't, you 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 don't need that. So what you're saying is, we've already put in deed restrictions seventy two, seventy five years ago.
Right.
Okay, and and you're saying, well, let's carry that forward to our new bylaw. Something that we required seventy five years ago.
We also require, I mean, you, then should we change all of our zoning bylaws for single family and?
Our single family homes right now don't require that they be elderly or?
No, but they do have other restrictions. So my my, all I'm trying to do is that A, like, clearly that would be intent.
We're creating a new district.
Yes, I understand that.
For a new reality.
Well.
For this reality.
For this reality. For this reality.
But they're carrying forward on their own those baseline restrictions that are already.
I haven't heard them ask for that.
So I think that, that, that's not quite right. What we are going to do is look at the current federal and state programs. For what we understand, I think collectively to be affordable, deeply affordable housing. And then, uh, we are going to look at the current deed restrictions and, and propose. Um, something that, uh, uh, changes that may be needed to the underlying. Yeah, old deeds, number one, in this third warrant article. And we're gonna also perform, uh, uh, propose conforming wording for the zoning by law articles. That, you know, the, and so that they are conformed to the current reality. That is actually funded for affordable housing.
So I guess, what, if you can understand this. You're looking for relief to get away from the restrictions for age, and if any exists for disability.
Yeah, so that, so that the, the effective restriction here is, uh, is, is on, is, is that all the units have to be affordable. I don't think we need to, we necessarily need to put in zoning. Who can act, who can, who can actually live there? Do you think that, I think that can be?
It was gonna be an age, there was gonna be age restriction.
And it was led to be seniors.
And I don't know where you guys are with the M D P A. Um, districts too, so you just, whether the one in Chambers parcel is part of that, Mr. Okay, so then, you know, cause then you don't wanna.
So, so, just so we're all clear. The purpose of the general by law change would relieve you from the existing underlying restrictions. That flow with the land.
Yeah.
Legally, if you've got a deed restriction and they don't, and, and they don't work to, to get rid of the deed restrictions. I don't, I don't think you can get rid of deed restrictions just by changing the zoning.
I, I think that's right.
What's the reason to change the deed restrictions? What's the reason?
But that's where you're looking.
It just says elderly only, and then some, several years later, the programs evolved to be both elderly and disabled. So that, at a minimum, needs to be.
Yeah, and chang- and changing, and changing the bylaw. To say that you can have elderly and disabled. Without changing the deed restrictions, doesn't get rid of the deed restrictions.
I understand that, but the point of that bylaw, of the general by law change. Is to empower the town through the town manager, in particular the select board. To do all of those things necessary that would eliminate. Both of those restrictions.
What general by law change?
The third by law change. You're right, not a bylaw. But the third warrant article.
Right. Authorizes the select board to do what is legally necessary.
Yes.
To remove the, to remove the deed restrictions.
That's correct.
So therefore, so walking into this tonight. I understood the intent, part of the intent of redevelopment. Was to provide affordable and deeply affordable housing. To seniors and to disa- and to those disabled. But in fact, that's not the case. All the, what they're looking to do.
I didn't hear that, all I heard was that they want affordable and deeply affordable. To comply with the federal and state requirements that they're presently applying for.
And, and barring any, uh, outrageous change, this is gonna continue to be deeply affordable and affordable housing for seniors and disabled.
Yes.
For, you know, unless something big changes.
So why?
I think we want that wording in the zoning.
That's why.
Think about what the impact might be on. They might say about.
But more importantly. When I asked a second ago, are you looking for relief away from those restrictions? So that it can be deeply affordable and you can be twenty two years old, or you can be thirty two years old. And you don't have to, and you don't have, and you can be able bodied.
You're, but you're poor. But you're poor, you need affordable housing.
Right, right, so you wanna, so you wanna create, you know, affordable housing. For those people as well.
Yeah, that's what the state and federal government is looking for.
For him to answer. Well, I don't know exactly what the housing authority wants to do, what I'm suggesting is that. It'd be left to the housing authority to make that determination. Now, if we, we just, we just put in zoning, which says that all of the units are gonna have to be affordable and deeply, and deeply affordable, period. If you, if you think that there's gonna be resistance from the town about, you know, a twenty two year old that's poor. If that's what you're saying, then that's something we need to think about in terms of what goes into the zoning.
But right now, we're, what we are contemplating is elderly housing. There are exceptions, you know, especially when you have two bedroom units, like we had a couple examples, another one. Um, you know, that I think we need to look into is, uh, more often than not, uh, grandparents these days are finding that they, uh, get. Pressed into service for doing, um, grandkid, you know, taking care of grandkids.
From those restrictions.
So, so we need to make sure that what is allowable under the regulation was expected. You know, federal law and state law and the subsidies and the, the section eight. Uh, program and the tax credit program and so forth, you know, what we put in place as best as we can effectuate today. Conforms to today's scenario as opposed to the scenario in nineteen sixty.
Yeah, we, cause we know at, at a minimum, we don't need it. Because we're more than just elderly housing, and the question is, what do we, you know, we know we're gonna be a hundred percent affordable.
We don't, and we don't meet what, financing required.
No, the, the occupancy right now at the site.
Includes disabled.
Includes disabled.
Can the disabled be any age?
Yes.
My own mother was in that.
And we didn't even know this until we started doing the title research for this project. It'd been lost and.
I remember when Bob uncovered this, and that's why I thought the whole point of this. Was to be able to carry forward those restrictions, but they're saying. They don't want to carry forward those restrictions, that I don't wanna be bound by them anymore.
Well, at a minimum, at a minimum, we wanted to take care of the handicap.
We can't make things worse for the population that's there now.
Right, right. But, but more importantly, the, the, the limits, the other limits that really matter. Um, that are in, that are in the deed restrictions are number of stories. Uh, and, 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 and number of units.
But let me just state clearly, you know, as the chair and, you know, speaking for the board and the staff, you know, is, is our intention. To redevelop this as senior housing, you know, the PRI ten year program has other. Parts of our portfolio that will focus on family housing, the needs is great there. There was an Boston Globe, uh, article, or opinion, it was actually opinion a couple days ago saying. Yeah, and, and, you know, we, we've got that in the plan, we got that covered, Needham is not one of those communities. But, um, and so, and we have twenty five acres of land that are focused on family housing, just up the hill, you know, so we're, we're not expecting or asking. To say, hey, give us the option in the future to flip this into family housing, you know, we're, we're not asking for that.
You want, so you want the definition to be elderly housing for disabled.
And cover the sort of exceptions, the, the, the footfalls you might get into if you have a twenty five year old caregiver, you know, legitimately. Providing services to a.
But, but they're not on the lease.
No, they're not on the lease.
Technically, are they then part of that?
Well, you're not, you, just because you're not on the lease, you're not allowed to have some unrelated person living there. You know, you, you know, that happens to be, you know, your granddaughter, you know.
What I'm hearing, if I may sum up. What I'm hearing is a sense of this board. That we do want to. Limit it to elderly and disabled. If the funding programs that are being applied for will allow that.
Right.
I'm happy.
Well, I'm happy, I'm happy.
Wanna make sure that our zoning reflects what the intent of what you're gonna deliver. And that it, you know, it continues. To protect those desire to be protected without those unintended consequences. So if you did have, so if you were trying to, you know, maintain and preserve an eligibility, an age restriction. And, you know, and, and I am forty nine years old. And I'm not part of that age restriction community, and I'm a caregiver. For, you know, for someone, and I am gonna live there for a year, regardless of whether I'm on a lease or not. That I'm still able to lawfully be an occupant, provide care to whomever. Even though I'm not disabled, nor am I. You know, of an elderly age.
Right, and I'll just say one more thing that, you know, like, vagaries of program changes, so when I first started working. Um, at the housing authority, the age for eligibility was sixty five. And now it's fifty eight or fifty five, depending upon the housing authority.
If it gets to forty million.
But you, you know, like, we need to build enough flexibility. To not bind ourselves with a property. But I, I think we hear what you're, what, what your, your goal and objectives is, we'll go and do the homework on our side and, and come back with a proposal.
Just to confirm, you were asking for anything else, because Reg, I heard you talking about, and I understand the scenario, but maybe this, this, these, this project is not meant for that scenario where the. Some grandparents, and they have to take care of.
If that's permitted by federal law, regulations, substantive, yeah, we wanna make sure that we don't have something in the local zoning or the, you know, local deeds. Yeah, that, that causes an issue, so yeah, that'll all be analyzed, those scenarios.
So let's move forward now to next steps, what our process is, and wrap this up.
Right.
So. Um. When you have your, when your next community meeting?
So we're looking at not next week, but the, uh, we're next week for residents, the following week for the first. Neighbor, I'll call it the neighbor meeting.
The week of what's for residents?
Next week, the week of the, uh, ninth.
And then for the whole community?
Yeah, we're, you know, following weekend, Tuesday, the seventeenth. For the first of the B's, we may have more than one.
Good, yeah, week of the what?
Seventeenth. I'm sorry, on the seventeenth, the, the week of the sixteenth.
Okay, so that's two weeks away in the seventeenth. For the whole public, have you given, have you undergone any notice, notice?
Yeah, we've got a draft and notices, a four page glossy brochure that will, you know, together and we'll mail it out to everybody. And everybody will get a copy and will probably, uh, get, um, articles to the extent we can in the various channels. Facebook page and so forth, and, um, leaflet people's houses and so forth. Invite town meeting members, we have a, a two page community engagement plan here, we're just finalizing right now.
And a question, are the, um, meetings, the meeting that's focused on the community. Um, does our residents allowed to come to that meeting? If the meeting is focused on the residents, are members of the community allowed to?
Yeah, and they're being, all being held at the Linden Chambers Community Room. Um, but the presentations are different, that what the residents. Care about, the Q and A they wanna ask about is really quite different than what, uh, neighbors care about, right? So, so, so our thinking is that we're, the residence meeting, we would like to kind of mostly keep it to residence issues and their Q and A. Cause they have a lot of paranoia, but a lot of excitement about what's coming up. Um, and those are very different issues than the neighbors are going to have, and we're thinking of having the neighbors and using those meetings to. Attract the precinct D, uh, town meeting members at a, a minimum, and then, you know, we all know in town meeting, there's a.
Old town meeting members or just from this, or just from this?
Well, I was gonna address that, so what we're thinking is certainly precinct D. But there's a number of, 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 uh, strong voices in town meeting that you hear every town meeting, and so we're gonna reach out to them. Um, and let them know, and then, you know, directly, and by, and then also. Um, uh, use the, hopefully the Needham Courier and the Needham Channel and the news that you need. Ham, you know, to, to actually get the word out. Observer, sorry, observer, that's what I meant to say.
So. There were complaints. From members of the community about. Some of the previous community meetings that you've had. And I think the proper thing to. Are communicating your notice of meeting. That, you know, you specifically say, you may not be able to assume that people are gonna click in the link, but you should include the link in everything that shows with this. Proposal, uh, just effectively a simple website, you know, to Dan's work, including the zoning, the zoning analysis. But in that notice of meaning, I think you need to say, you know, a so, a, a, a top line summary. That you're looking for a four story building of fifty two feet. Uh, a total number of units, which I don't think was present in your previous notice of.
It was not.
So I highly recommend at a minimum, you include those specific details. And I, I think reaching out to, you know, the town meeting members. I think to all town, some email to all town meeting members is, you know, is helpful. Uh, in addition to the work of our, you know, of our, uh, local news. Um. You know, I think, and I think that would be helpful, so then, so you're gonna have that, that's one. Those are two community meetings. I know you've had some others before, when do you anticipate your future, or do you at this point anticipate additional community meetings?
So the second community meeting is targeted for the week of the twenty, uh, third. A week, a week later, yeah.
A community, and that community meeting.
Neighbor meter, yeah.
So it's another.
So with, there would be two, because people can't always come to a particular single meeting anyway, there's conflicts and so forth, so we figure there's. Gonna have at least two of those.
So that's the week of the twenty third. And then what about for the general public?
So, um, um, what do you mean by that?
Well, you're having some meetings that are focused for residents. And then you have some meetings that are focused for the wider, you know, that for the wider community. I wanna know, I'm curious, how many meetings you, you intend to have between now and town meeting? For residents of the community and for the wider community.
And so I was just speaking next month, if you're talking between now and town meeting, we will do another round of meetings. Probably associated with our, um, CPC, CPA funding applications, because that will start up in the, um, winter. And, um, and that will give us another opportunity.
I wanna stay focused on zoning timeline, cause we, when, and Alex, we need.
I think, oh, which would you be ready then to come back to us on, say, November the seventh with a revised zoning based upon the conversation? On November the seventh?
You have a meeting that night?
Yes, maybe November seventh, if you're, you, you will have had your community meetings, probably in October. You've gotten the feedback and depends on the setbacks and done the research on the issue of rates tonight, does that work?
Uh, I just wanna pause on that, I like where you're going with that. I don't know if that's enough in terms of for the broader community meeting. I wanna just focus, when is, when does the zoning need to be complete for our? To, you know, to refer to the, I think complete, but it may not yet be fully finalized, to go to the select board. For them to refer back to us.
I think we had a range of, of us finalizing design. Um, begin, um, timeline of December the fifth up until the latest would have been January the sixteenth, with the goal of getting it done earlier within that window.
So that's why they're doing these community meetings now, so. I, you probably. You'd, makes sense to probably schedule another community meeting for the broader community, maybe for the week of November sixth. And then, and then, and then on the twenty first of November, come back to us.
That's. Trying to finalize it in December, I think you're cutting it close. Cause they're having meetings with the. Cause they're having meetings with the. When, say, the community, I assume you mean like the, the. The High Rock area.
The why, the why, not just the residents in, in, uh, Linden.
Grammy, two of those meetings already.
The High Rock School area. You know, Linden Street.
There are two.
That's what you're planning to do.
There's one totally scheduled on Tuesday, the seventeenth with what I'll call the neighbors, being High Rock neighbors. You know, Oak Street neighbors, you know, uh, you know, all, you know, uh, uh, not just a, you know. The kind of thing you do on a statutory notice point of view, but we actually noticed everybody up to High Rock Street and across High Rock and so forth.
Right.
And then.
High Rock and Chestnut, Oak and Mark Tree.
Yeah, that whole area that surrounds the High Rock School basically. And, and the second meeting is scheduled for the. Twenty, we, uh, Monday, the twenty-third.
But that's for the residents.
No, for the neighbors. The residences may be scheduled on next week on, yeah, on the eleventh.
So I think what's missing, it, so you've got one for the, for the residents, one for the, I'll call them the immediate neighbors. But then I think what I'm hearing is there wants to be a more general one that captures the rest of the community, the rest of the town.
I want.
Town meeting members.
When I say commute, so when I say residents, I refer to Linden Chambering residents.
Right.
When I say the whole community, I, I mean residents of Linden Chambers. And notice specifically by mail for every home between High Rock, Oak Street. Uh, probably Chestnut and Mark.
That's what I'm. That's what we mean by neighbors.
The third one is, there's a third category, which is town meeting members.
But we're. We're, we're guiding the town meeting members to the neighbors' meetings because, you know, they represent the neighbors, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, so they should be there, you know, and, and listening to what the residents, the neighbors have to say.
So, so.
So they have two of those meetings.
Two neighbors' meetings, yes. By the end of the month, yeah. Well, November seventh, we should be good.
But then when would we hold our hearing meeting?
Well, we would hold the hearing probably, um.
January.
If we get the language done by December fifth, we can hold the hearing on January sixteenth. The drop dead date for a hearing is February twenty-seven.
So, and then we, and then from that hearing. We may have separate pressure on us to reconsider and to.
Yeah.
Make the zoning, modify the zoning further. So that's. Um. Right, that's why I wondered if we then do have time in November for them to have another community meeting. I didn't realize you were doing.
Yes.
A week apart from each other. I would have anticipated a little more, you know, a little more.
Well, the reason, what you're trying to do is attract everybody to come. And, and some people just can't come because they've been doing something else that first night. So you wanna have a sec, you know, a second option. So the notice that goes out is already drafted. It, it's been finalized and would be going to the printer this week because you need the time to print it up, stuff it. And put it in the first class mail.
I'd be interested in a summary of the comments that you.
I'd be interested in providing you a whole copy of it. You can give me your own thoughts.
I mean, initially, I think it would be good to send to the board.
Sure.
Uh, to me, you know, a summary of. You know.
We can do that.
You know, that may relate to some of the specific details like height.
Yeah, I mean, what, we can give it to you tomorrow.
Be missing is if we get any comments in the first meeting that we wanna then somehow modify the design or the.
Exactly.
Between that first meeting or the second meeting or between that first meeting and what comes back to the planning board.
Although I, I think again, people can't come to both, you know, people can come to the second meeting, but not the first. You kinda wanna present the same thing to everybody.
I get it.
And, yeah.
I get it, I'm on board. So, um, so there is some detail that needs to be worked out in terms of the zoning.
For sure.
Um, and. That's gonna have its own process between Utah and Town Council, Title Council.
Well, yeah, that's the non-zoning article. We, you know, we need to set up a meeting with the select board. Um, and, uh, and Chris, Chris people be there.
Right.
Uh, and, and talk about the non-zoning article. So we need, we need some internal.
And we let them know a couple of weeks ago by a letter, um, that we needed to do that. And they're sort of digesting that right now.
And at some point, I think we need to sit down and think on it.
Yeah.
Um, is it suggestion? I, I before seeing, uh, a list of these, um. Restrictions and so forth, perhaps it was provided to Community Preservation Committee on which I serve. Um, you know what I mean by that list?
Of the restrictions?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I put together.
So, um. So you then would probably have a summary of the zoning modifications from this.
Yeah.
A redline version from one meeting. If there, if there are any that you're gonna propose. For that meet, our next meeting in November. Need, and Alex, do we have anything already on the schedule for that date?
No.
No.
Okay. Well, there's all the time, but not right now. Uh, do you have any comments or questions for us?
This has been very thorough and we really appreciate the time and, and the commitment to helping make this a success and.
Of course.
Helping guide us here.
That's the goal.
It's an important project for the community and I wanna make sure that, you know, that, um, we have. Um, you know, the things that we need to line up properly to ensure the most success for the town. So thank you very much.
Good, thank you. Great, thanks.
Very good. Uh. The next items on, the next item on our agenda is, um, the zoning board of appeals cases for October nineteen. There are two cases, one with respect to thirty Wilshire Park and the other, it relates to twenty-four Webster Street. Now, I, I have no business interest or financial interest in, um. Uh, in thirty Wilshire Park, but I am personal, I'm, I'm friends with the property owners. So I'm gonna, uh, recuse myself and step outside for that discussion. And I've asked Artie to read the discussion for thirty Wilshire Park and then just flag me. When you're ready to talk about twenty-four Webster.
Yeah, cool, good. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much.
So as we know, this is listed as case one, it's thirty Wilshire Park. They're having an addition put on the house. They're tearing down an existing deck and then putting the addition on. And it's, it's, it's gonna create impervious surface. Um, and it's gonna increase the, you know, the floor area and the total area of the lot. So I guess Lee, you had some comments on this.
And the other thing that I caught on this, Jean, you might have caught it too, and then, okay, um, so the, the, the property is currently conforming. Rel- relative to F A R. And they're actually introducing, they're, 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 they're. With this addition, it's gonna go above the minimum F A R, which the bylaw allows, which is the point three eight. So that, I think it's at a point three seven now. I think it's gonna go up to a point four two. That's not allowed by special permit, that's normally allowed by variance. So the house is. So it's, so it's the, um, non-conformity relative to the side yard, which are the, uh. So they're allowed to basically make an operation within that non-conforming district by special, by non-conformity. By special permit, but they cannot, um, increase the, um. At the F A R to make a non-compliance. So I think that's what, what was the problem.
And.
I, I moved that. Oh, was it our?
No, I, I think we're, I think we still have some other comments.
Oh, sure.
Well, I think, I mean, if by chance they grant it, then we're also talking about. Um, I think requirement for all, 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 storm water, all, all, roof surface mitigation into the property. Because if they're, they're creating additional impervious surface, I think it should then be all mitigated on the property. Is it, I'm sure it's not now. Because I think it should, I think it should conform to, and the building standards of today of making sure that the groundwater is kept on the property.
I thought it would have to get a storm order from that.
So that right would be, doesn't they, don't they have to do that anywhere?
I thought they had to do it anywhere, but I.
So, so with this, so with this addition, they would have to.
Become compliant with the.
Comply with the current storm. I think, I think we should make note of that, make, make sure they realize that.
Okay, sure. That they should assure that it, that meets the storm water by law.
Yeah, but we're also have comments on that, that it's going above, that's allowed. And is that comment, is that feeling that we. That we're, we're not in favor of that? What, what, how, how are we feeling about that?
Well, it's not allowed under the.
That's what we're pointing out.
Yeah.
We're pointing out that.
It should be denied.
That the not, that the non-conformity of the F A R can only be allowed by variance. That's how I would word it.
And the Z J does not.
They wanna issue the variance, they have the authority to issue the variance.
They haven't done variances like that.
I know that, I know that, you know, that is. Every, everybody in town knows that.
Do we have any other comments that we wanna pass along?
Nope.
Gene, you're probably wanna make a motion.
I move that, uh, we make, uh, comment to the Z B A on thirty Wilshire Park. Um, to point out that the change in the F A R, uh, will be non-compliant and can. And pursuant to our bylaw can only be changed by variance. Um, you know, can only be allowed by variance. And, uh, let me comment that the Z B A should make sure that the addition, um. Uh, will conform to the current storm water management regulations.
Um, I second that one.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? Paul? No, no, and we go to the vote then, no pause?
I would.
Gene, yes, what's that?
All in favor.
All in favor, oh, that's right, aye. Uh, actually, Nastash is not here.
She's not voting.
She's not, she's not here. So technically, it has to be a roll call vote. If someone's not here.
No, it has to be a roll call vote.
Oh, she's on the screen on, okay, okay. So it's three, three in favor.
Give nothing.
Give nothing. Getting well said.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, we sent a, uh, request that they kick the people out of the meeting.
To be delivered by the board chair. Will come with us. I, very good. So this brings us to the case of twenty-four Webster Street. Lee, is there any anomaly with this one?
I didn't detect anything.
Do my colleagues have any comments or questions about this case?
I know.
Can I have a motion to vote no comment?
I move that with, uh, respective twenty-four Webster, uh, Street, um. Um, we.
Second.
We have a motion by Gene, a second by Paul. Any discussion? Eric and I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There's no abstention, no nay. The motion carries unanimously. This brings us, we have three sets of minutes for one for April four, one for July eleven, and one for August fifteen. Very good.
On April fourth, um. Yes, on the, uh, second page in the discussion with, uh, C, C A P C Chair Stephen Frail. Um. Says. And Miss McKnight participated in the C A P C. Um, I think that's a mistake. I'm not on the C A P C.
Or the C P C.
Wait a minute. C A.
Chair of the Climate Storm Zoning.
Climate Action Planning.
Already was, already was the C A P C member.
Right. So it should be, uh, Miss Spada and Miss Crocker. Okay, um, and then, uh, the last power weapon is, uh, there's a reference to somebody named Justin from engineering. And that's a town employee, don't we have his last name?
Yes.
So.
Love that.
Answer his surname. Okay, um, and then.
Page four.
And then on page four, um. Didn't understand this report, um, this new minister, the finance committee grabbed the idea that the A D U was going to get created. The couple was going to move into the A D U or rent to a family of four kids. So, um. And so we're talking about what the fin- finance committee had to say about A D U. She feels they focused on school revenue costs. And this is Mrs. Spada speaking. Then it says, Mrs. Spada stated. That is the next generation anyway, and not really the rental. I, I don't understand what that sentence means. Not need to really get in as is or just to lose it?
I think she was referring to.
Is she referring to like, if, if it's family, kids living in it, it's not really a rental unit?
Yeah, and then it's not just the kids and, you know, it's the next generation being the kids and not, um.
Well, it seemed like the finance committee was objecting to the idea that. I, you know, everybody thinks it's the old couple that's gonna live in the house and rent out the A D U to somebody else. But the old couple could move into the A D U and rent the unit to a family. Yeah, to the, to the house, to the, to a family, right. And the finance committee was concerned about that because their families could have been with children. And Mrs. Spada stated that is the next generation anyway, and not really the rental.
It would be the renters, but they would be renting the main house. Um, you know, um. I would take it out.
Okay, that's what I.
Yeah, just take out the sentence.
There's a point with, uh, above that when we talk some cost unit questions. About Stephen Frail, they're basically, they're basically. Said building.
Oh, yes. They basically said building construction is about one percent more.
Leave it as is.
Just.
I think you're right, that's what's intended, but leave it as is.
Okay, okay. Well, the construction is about one percent.
And then one on page two for the July eleven.
Then, then I think with respect to the April fourth minutes, uh. Um, I move that we accept the minutes of April fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, with the redline change shown and with the changes discussed.
We have a motion by Gene, a second by Artie. Any discussion? Eric and I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We, aye, we have unanimously voted to adopt the minutes of, uh, April four. This brings us to page two on the minutes of July eleven, the second paragraph.
So what we're talking about here is the Home Advisory Group appointments that starts on page one. Um, and in the middle of the third paragraph, um. I'm talking about the economics of development and Mr., I'm talking about the different candidates. And I was suggesting that Mr., um, Wavitt, the candidate for appointment, um. Would bring that experience, um, that insight into the economics of development. Then, um, their sentence I questioned was, Mr. Albert noted that any site plan modifications would be across. All districts. And I, uh, uh, it just wasn't. Whether this is relevant in this paragraph or was that?
Above. Question, Mr. Wavitt stated that he did not wanna serve, but it was only an advisory committee. This committee is, has a little broader scope. He noted some deficiencies in the site, but that, that would be Mr. Albert.
Yeah, exactly.
Notice some deficiencies in the site plan review process, um. And, and so it seems as though this comment about site plan review was a continuation of that discussion.
Right.
And it doesn't really belong in this paragraph or it should be deleted.
That's, that. We can delete that.
Is that all right with you?
The highlighted sentence.
Yes.
In the third, yeah, just delete it. Okay.
And then there are two, uh, the next, the next one comes on page three that relates to our discussion. About floor area ratio with Joe Matthews.
For, oh, yeah, Joe Matthews', um, presentation about floor area ratios, um, and then there's a sentence. Um, let's see, uh, this is part of his presentation. Um let's see, uh this is part of his presentation, I think.
Leave it. Leave it in.
Even affordable housing would need double, if not higher than median income.
Keep it. I had a similar question when he was speaking. Keep it in.
But keep it in because that's what he said. All right. Um then uh on the on page four, I think that's the next one. And here we're talking of well, we're still talking about floor area ratio. In the last paragraph. Um. Mister Block made a statement. Mister Matthews may uh continue uh about his concerns, the issues need to clarify. He he mentioned the corner of it. Was Sharon Roseberry was. He is open to height setbacks and lot coverage for enforcement would be the issue.
I.
Yes, people should be allowed to finish basements if they are already there. Um was was this Mister Matthews continuing to speak or was this?
I thought that I remember talking, you know. This kind of came up. Paul was also saying something very similar that it's not like floor area ratio wasn't as relevant. Because that's just the overall box. What does it matter if the, you know, the third story is finished or not? And so the real limiting factors would be, you know, or the more significant um limiting factors would be height and the setbacks and and lock coverage. But I don't recall discussing enforcement. At all. Um.
I think enforcement, they were it came up most people's because the idea was presently uh if the if the it's unfinished areas and they're not counted because they're unfinished. People will go ahead and finish them later and avoid enforcement. I think that was the issue. Of enforcement in that in that conversation.
Because he didn't agree about these other dimension regulations, but he did. He did speak to that point, Gene, about enforcement. So.
Yeah, so you think that it's Mister uh Matthews speaking and since.
No, I think it's I think there is, you know, without going back to the tape. I talked about those dimensional regulations and he talked about enforcement.
So should it be Mister Block? Um. Said.
No.
And then Mister Matthews responded that he feels people.
No.
But that's I I didn't bring it up when we were talking about Webster, the house in the corner of Webster and Roseberry.
I I don't remember. I don't remember Joe talking about he feels people should be allowed to finish the basements if they're already there.
You know, he didn't want that.
I don't remember him making that comment.
He didn't want to include that finished. But he what he specifically wanted was to, actually, he didn't really care about the basements. He cared about finishing an attic. Um but I think when he was physically here, I think he may have said that if we're going to include, we're going to modify for area ratio, let's include the finished basement. So I'd take out that, take that out, I guess, because it doesn't seem seems out of place.
Yeah, take out the yellow highlighted.
Yes.
Um two sentences. Okay.
And then you on.
Both of the sentences. Okay.
Thank you. And then on uh page six at the same minutes. Gene McKnight is uh was not vice chair.
I'm not vice chair. Uh I believe so I wasn't then.
So that'll be Natasha.
So it would be. Yeah, it should be Natasha.
And I uh yeah. So with respect to the minutes of July eleven, Gene, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we accept the minutes of July eleven, two thousand twenty three with the um changes that are redlined and with the additional changes that are discussed at this meeting.
Yeah, a motion by Gene, a a second by Paul, uh by Artie. Um. Uh any discussion here and now come to vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No nays, no abstention. Um the motion carries. We've unanimously adopted the minutes of um July the eleven. This brings us to the minutes of August fifteen uh on page two.
Yes, um it's gender. Some people do not seem to to the concept of multifamily having near transportation. It may need to be handled with a two-pronged approach, one standard M B T A and one for other. Okay. That makes sense. Some may say local housing is a commercial use. Um I don't know who said that or what it means.
Multi-family. If I said it, I was referring to multi-family housing.
Some may say, oh, so vocal is the wrong word. Some may say multi-family.
Housing is a.
Okay, okay, understood then. Okay.
And then.
That and then the next page. Um. It it says, uh the sentence says, and this is uh Mister Crocker speaking. He wants to see what is happening with detached A D U's. And I wasn't sure if 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 the meaning was he wants to see what is happening in other towns. It's detached A D U's. What exactly it means to say he wants to see what is happening with detached A D U's.
Well, I'm I'm looking at it myself. I'm trying to make as a tale of what was going on. I mean, I see. Um, you know, we're talking about the U do it hard in Fremont. Detached A D U's unless it's here in a little town with detached A D U's.
Versus studying detached A D U's. Wants to see what is.
Could have been related to the future, what's happening with the fact that we've already it's we've already voted to expand what's going on. Then before we before we continue any further discussions. We should see what's going on and then, you know, later down the line, we can think of we.
Bring it back. What's going on and needed.
Yeah, which I think I think I think that's why.
Wants to see what's happening with attached with attached A D U's.
With detached.
But no, nothing is happening.
Artie, Artie wanted to see what's happening in other towns with detached A D U's.
All right, that's what I.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, then. Where else at the bin? All right, so um.
Before the planning board takes up detached again.
Hmm.
He wants more time, which may I understand.
Do I need to add something to this?
No, no.
Then the next um uh paragraph right in the middle, there's a reference to this. But this gets the board into a better place. And um Mister Al and Mister Albert is speaking.
Mister Al.
But this.
Well, this is me, Mister Block.
There will be two different members in the planning board. There's no way of knowing what these members would be thinking. Mister Block's stated that other things may pop up also. But this gets the board into a better place.
So this I I didn't say, but this was referring to that, to the Excel spreadsheet.
Yes, sure.
The planning.
That's what I thought. What would you call it?
I would just, you could, I don't know.
I mean, it may have said this, but it it.
I don't know that we need to, but I was referring to the planning schedules.
This planning schedule. All right.
Yeah.
I mean. Okay. Uh, okay, then down on uh the two, three, fifth paragraph, it starts with Mister Crocker. Mister Crocker stated F A R should include all inside space and cannot be regulated.
Do you believe?
It cannot be regulated. What are we? I mean, what are we talking about?
Well, that's what they say.
What was not? Well, we're talking about the seventeen. We were talking about two thousand seventeen. There was large house study committee. Well, coming in, the goal was to find a way to reduce houses and all some other issues going on. And uh saying that should include all space inside cannot be work cannot be regulated. I don't remember saying, I mean, phrase cannot be regulated per se, but.
We're gonna stop it at space?
Yeah, and just say, Mr. Crocker stated F A G should include all inside.
Suggestion. Thanks, Alex.
Period. That work?
Cool, man?
Yeah, where the space is finished, unfinished, that 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 covers all that. Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, oh, you do want?
No, 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 we don't. We don't have that. We don't have that.
Inside space. Okay, uh last paragraph. Um there's a reference to a committee. Um but it it's not clear what committee is being talked about. When the home study is predominantly completed. This is Mister Block speaking. In June, two thousand twenty four, he will see if the committee can start up then in September.
So that related to the that committee would be like a large house review committee.
Um.
And it's not the home committee, it's the home, H O N E.
Oh, that's right. Oh, I I meant to make that change. Okay. Yeah, the home committee. And you're right. And then we will see if the if a large house co- committee can start up then in September.
Yes.
A large house committee. Okay, and it doesn't need to be capitalized because it's not an existing.
And then for the yellow above, I would just leave it as is.
Well, uh uh she would like to take advantage of the energy and study this for.
May.
All right, we just leave it on that. Where is?
Sorry, the one prior, I was fixing home. Um he will see if a.
Large house committee.
Large house committee can start up then in September. Okay, next page. Mister Albert agrees with Mister Matthews. It is a high priority. Uh is this study of F A R?
I don't know, Paul, that you actually felt, but I don't recall you feeling that F A R is.
Large houses in general?
Probably who did this, the Matthews.
It's too late now, Paul. It's stated right here, too.
I think affordability.
I thought I tell you, it might be the.
Large house affordability.
Um so just say both, large house and affordability.
Uh Mister Matthews, large house, large houses and affordability.
Are.
See it?
Are.
I have.
Are priorities there.
Yeah, but the major problem is going to get to you.
Are. On priority, okay. Um and then um if if taking all the step time, it may prevent the board from taking this up as quickly as is he uh is that a reference to Mister Matthews?
Yes.
Okay, so Mister Matthews. And then where the word committee appears will again say large house committee. Striking up the large house committee as a responsible. Okay, then down to, you know, the bottom of the page. Um. Report, okay, the plan is to group.
Again, it says own. It should be.
Oh, yeah, every could you just do a check and make on the word own capitalized and just make sure it always says.
Can do a replacement.
Yeah, it seems like we definitely can start doing it. Um. Twenty two years with firms for the home advisory group. She anticipated her for me next, will be made next week. Plan is to give the firm, that is the you know, the firm who was chosen, a copy of the housing plan. Mister Block wants to make sure the housing committee is included. Um. The housing committee that did the housing plan or
No.
Housing need them. Um advisory?
No, just give me a second to read it, please.
Yeah.
The it's really the us, the planning board.
So it it Mister Block wants to make sure the planning board is included. He would like the planning board.
They're included in what?
Maybe.
In the decision of.
I'm just about to tell you to give me a chance.
Uh huh.
I wanted to be included, you know, um. What I'm referring to is I wanted the the planning board to be in uh to participate at a level at a more at an engaged level, like the planning board was not involved in the housing committee. That planning board, you know, was.
Plus with the next sentences.
Yeah.
Right, then I would some strike that.
Just strike.
Strike the what's in the yellow.
Strike it.
Strike what's in yellow.
All right, that's it. So.
Right. Move that we accept the minutes of August fifteen, two thousand twenty three. Um with the um changes showing the red line and changes discussed this evening.
We have a motion by Gene. We have a second by Artie. Any discussion here and now come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. There is no opposition. The motion carries unanimously. This brings us uh to our reports from planning board members and the planning director.
Hmm.
Do you agree?
Uh sure, everybody. Um we have a next home meeting is scheduled uh the Thursday of this week. Um and at that meeting that we got planned, we're gonna they're gonna be re- we're gonna be reviewing the results from the modeling that um the consultant has done on on the recommendations were that were in the housing plan and the total in the house. And we're also going to be looking at um what the model um represents in terms of what would happen if the town just changed the zoning in its existing commercial districts to allow housing by special by right as opposed to by special permit. And I think the results are going to show that the housing plan uh more than provides the inadequate number of housing units and that the zoning itself also pro- provides uh the existing zoning provides sufficient number of housing units. So I think it's going to be a decision that board of the town is going to have to make. Um about really, I think, how far it wants to expand existing zoning profile and to encompass the housing plan rec- recommendations.
Hmm.
Um but it was kind of surprising, I think, to find to see the numbers which are which are representing that the existing zoning with this conversion from special permit uses to as of right uses would probably create uh a compliant profile for need them.
As just by making that one change.
By changing it, it's so basically enabling apartment density housing by right in the commercial districts like Chestnut Street and along the commercial corridor.
Right.
Capturing um the zoning in the A one districts.
Hillside.
Hillside would be, I think, uh enabling the apartment zone with that density. So um it's interesting because I think it's 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 going to be a a different conversation, I think, than what some of us were concerned about, which was that maybe the housing plan would not have enough units in it and the zoning would be way under. But it turns out that it looks like the zoning itself with with the foundational zoning um would enable the town to become compliant. So I think it's a conversation about what does the town want to do to really provide affordable housing? And what are the parameters in the housing plan that they want to, you know, move forward?
Does you don't have to, you don't even have to consider um something Stephen Palmer and the Avery School. I never understood how they got developed without any kind of change in zoning. It's just only single residents, but um that we don't even have to rezone them to apartment anyone?
No, what they did was they took the existing A one apartments along. They took the existing zoning profile. So it would would have been what? Chestnut Street, the center was not included. Um it would have been a business district allowing for apartments to happen in there. It would have been every square apartments happening there with the density that's called for.
Hmm.
Yeah, allowing it hillside avenue business, allowing it in um the industrial district, I think, along Hillside Avenue, carrying the apartment districts as they went farther along the corridor and counting them at their density projections. And that actually generated, um if you um if you massage, I think, the general residence district a little, a a sufficient number of units to meet the requirements of the law. And that was and that was being modeled that, you know, though at the at the low and not not at the overlay density number. It was being modeled Chestnut Street at a point seven F A R. And it was being modeled that, you know, two and a half stories under the base zoning.
And how many and how many units per acre?
I don't have that. I I'm kind of reluctant to discuss all that kind of here tonight because
Yeah.
The committee hasn't even had this.
I get that. I get that. And I don't intend to open that can right now, but I do want to make two specific comments. One, I'd like the board, I want to put on our agenda for our for our next meeting.
Right.
On the seventeenth. You know, to review what the what the direction of the home is as a result of a meeting in two days from now.
Okay.
And I want, because I want the planning board to be able to participate and discuss. You know, uh in order to be able to provide home with our specific recommendations or thoughts or comments to be included at the next at the next meeting for home after that. The other comment I I would like you to make specifically to the home committee, what the home committee needs is that while that that may be the case. In order to uh actually achieve the goals that we're looking to with the. The goals that we're looking to with the zoning. Just to say, more multifamily housing units closer to our transportation nodes. To answer your earlier question. That we should allow for a much greater level of number of unit per acre. Because, you know, under A one, eighteen units an acre. Under today's economics where it's a single family lot is, uh, dirt value is about a million bucks. It's not, it's not, it's not enough, the construction costs are too high, nothing's going to move and turn over and achieve those goals. So I think we really need to get, and I don't know if the magic number is thirty-six units an acre. Um. As opposed to eighteen units an acre, but I do think that. It needs to be higher than what the base zoning. Would allow with those changes you're talking about simply for compliance with M B T A.
Well, I think that time, that conversation, I think the committee is going to have to, I think they'll have, that conversation will be happening, I think. The goal here was to kind of lay out with two parameters and talk about expansion. Um, and how it should be expanded, and then basically a meeting, um, on October eighteenth, a planned, it's first townwide workshop. And what information should be presented, and those are the kinds of questions I think that will come out of, or are going to be focused at, at the workshop.
So then what I'd like is for our next meeting on the seventeenth, I know we've been a hearing on the seventeenth, I don't know, I can't, I don't think we have other. Uh, time consuming items in our agenda that day. Um, I'd like, I'd like you.
We have.
Yeah, but the hearing has been very time.
Right, so, but nevertheless, I'd, I'd like. For you and Natasha and Jean to report into us on where the, all of the outcome of the home discussion. For expansion or. You know, preservation, thank you, anything else, Lee?
Uh, yes, so the budget, um, I'm preparing the budget for the planning board, Sue, the forms just came out last Friday, due to the end of the month, just want to inform everybody, I am going to be asking for a planner, an additional planner.
Yeah, good.
Um, I put the, put it out there. I'm not optimistic that we'll get it at the first, at the first ask, but at least we'll start the conversation.
How mu- how much are you going to pay them, it depends how much you're going to pay.
Well, I haven't done the research, I'll, 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 I'm beginning, I've got to meet with human resources on all of.
So we, with that, one of the things that's come up before is if it's like a, a one-time cost. It's like one bucket if it's, uh. You know, opposed to a full-time permanent employee.
I'm going to ask for full-time.
Full-time, absolutely, good, absolutely.
That's what I'm going to ask for, and, um. Here we go, you know.
Well, I just.
You ask, you don't care.
Right, and you need to create the conversation.
I'm also, I also think that we should increase our budget for, you know, for studies.
Um, I can ask for that as an add-on.
Yes.
Well, no, actually for studies, I think we're, we're back in the appropriation or as well, that's how they. Um.
So we can chat about that.
Were we, were we running, are we running out of money for studies?
We're gonna, we're using a lot of the money for home.
Oh, so, and I, I want to make sure that. When, you know, my term for chair is going to come up. And I want to make sure that. You know, we preserve the planning schedule and as we look at other things. That we do have sufficient funding.
Well, we, we don't want to do what they do in Washington, wherever, whenever regime, regime changes, all hell breaks loose, we want to kind of keep a steady, steep, keep the process, keep what we think they're doing, and just keep going in that direction.
And maintain the planning process.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's what we should be doing.
And I think we may need some more funding to support that, so I'm happy to chat with you about the budget. Because I'm going to have to be there to, you know, to support it. You know, uh, the FinCon.
Sure.
Uh. I'm going to like, or have, anything else?
Uh, yes, a little bit of bad news, um, we're going to be losing our thing specialist Karen Son of War.
Oh, jeez.
I know, I see, um, I know, she. She's been with us for a long time, but I think she. Um, she's, you know, I was lucky to get her, because she's such a high, high quality consultant, she's doing work all over the state, but I think she's at a stage of her life where. She just wants to do the consulting work.
Um, she was so helpful on the housing plan, we couldn't have done that housing plan without Karen, she's the one who pulled it all together.
She wrote it, but that's what she does for towns all over the state, I mean, she's got a very active, you know, consulting practice, and that's what she does, so she's willing to stay and find somebody new.
So this is one reason.
I don't find anyone new.
Who's going to have a housing plan?
That's you.
Oh, we're going to have, we'll.
I'm going to try to find somebody else, I had a hard time the last time around, though. So I'm not sure. It's, it, it, last time when I advertised, I think I got fifty. Folks, we, uh, put their, put their hat and a ring, and there was nobody there, I, we were the fighter.
Is the planner that you're looking to hire? I, can they fill any of this spot, can the planner you're looking to hire from any of that?
No, I think the problem with housing planners and why is a lot of towns are, are not hiring, at Lexington, Sudbury, they're all using a common agency that has housing planners on staff. Because the skills are so specialized and you need them for such a, you know, maybe twenty hours, eighteen hours a week. That is, is difficult to find the, the quality, the person with the skill set that you want, that wants to work. For you on a part-time basis, so a lot of these towns, through our current stuff. Have gone to this model, they're using an, an agency entity that has all the skills to do the housing monitoring and do all these other pieces. We were always lucky because we had a different model with Karen's skill set, because she had all those skills. So, um, there are a couple people that I know of in the housing field that I reached. That I reached out to and I'm going to be talking to to see if they're interested in this. Um, if we're lucky, we'll find, you know, someone with Karen's skill set.
Hmm.
If not, we'll have to think about, I, I think, the model that.
Right.
Lexington and Sudbury are using, which is, I don't think is, is as good as having a, your own person do it, but. We'll have to see what, what happens.
Hmm. And if. If the Affordable Housing Trust Fund ever expands its role in this channel, it, it will need support by planning.
Right.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's all I heard.
Paul?
Nope.
Jean?
I don't know, I don't.
Already?
Okay. Uh, we saw this correspondence here, right, you, you, you've always mentioned.
We're going to get.
It was in a.
Yeah, not there yet, thank you.
And this tree thing, where did you mention that?
Yeah, not there yet, uh, thank you. I.
Actually, I'm, I'm sorry, you asked if there was something else, I would like, I would like us to. Um, look into what the planning, what I guess a working group had done. I don't know if it was two thousand seventeen, exactly fifteen, exactly when, as far as looking at the tree by law that other towns are doing, I understand that this is, that we're saying it's a select board's role. But that.
We're not saying that to select.
Well, the select, fine, the select board's saying that, we don't have to say that. But we should, we need to look into that, we've done the work, we've done a lot of work back then. And, and there are a lot of towns, a number of towns around us that have it, and we, so back then, so the guidance was already based on some of those towns. So what, you know, what's left to do is have the political will to do something. That's what's left to do.
So why don't you, I, I would, I would recommend. That, uh, and Lee can do that, but I re- I recommend, why don't you have a conversation with. With the select board members.
Yeah.
And then report back to us on where they, you know, we're there and take that up, leave that, leave that up.
Yeah, I, I've, I've spoken to one or two, I'll speak to all of them.
Good.
And I already, I mean, we already know it, or maybe we don't already know, but they're planning a. Something later in the year to talk about trees, but it's. It's the workshop, just talk about trees. It's not, it doesn't mean it's going to lead to anything beyond that. I think we need to make sure something leads to something. We need to. We need that, it's a political work.
It was a tree committee. That's right. That actually did a lot of work, and actually came up with a, a suggestion.
Hmm.
And then it got scuttled.
Yep.
That's a process I was referring to.
Uh, you know, yeah, and, and my recollection is the last time we talked about this with the select board. It was like, well, why don't we just divide the tree committee?
Right.
That already exists, so, and then nothing happened. So.
Well, I think, I, I think it was a, technically, I think, it was a, it was a working group. Yeah, technically, I think it was a working.
No, I was. Alex, yes, Alex was.
Awesome.
So what, what's the, what was the outcome from that work?
The outcome was, Artie and I talked about it today, so he's, everything he's said so far is right on, but, um. The outcome was that we had a draft of the bylaw, which would be a general bylaw. Which again is not our, you know, purview per se. Um. And the draft ended up after much review of other towns and discussion of various ways to do it. Relying heavily on the way Wellesley did it, even though at first we thought that it was too kind of cumbersome, when we thought everything through, it really was the way that probably made the most sense. The bylaw was, so the bylaw was in a draft form. And we had only really begun to start looking at the regulations, which were the real, like, detail, the weeds of it, that was going to be. Discuss the enforcement issues, the, um, the fee schedule, that kind of thing, so we didn't delve too deeply into that yet, that was. The next step. But when we got to the point of, this is. The draft, um. Bylaw, let's see what the select board thinks about it. Um. I think, I don't know if there was any formal communication from them, but the vibe was. We have a lot on our plate, this is, um. You know, when it gets to the top of the list, we'll do it, and it's just not there yet.
And I believe I was at the select board meeting when this was discussed, and what I memory, my memory is. Um, there was a concern that this would be too much work for the tree warden, and it would just be impossible.
That was. That was at a chair vice chair.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think you and I were there, I remember.
Yeah.
You and I were the chair vice chair, I don't think I remember who was chair, who was vice chair.
Who was the chair?
Uh, yeah, it was you and me, Bo Handle and Matt Corelli. And, I don't know.
I was there.
You were there, and Kate was there. And, um.
It was a funding issue where they.
I think she was, was that Tom Rider?
No, it's Eddie Olson and.
Eddie said.
Ed Olson was there.
He, he was clear the whole time that there would be, that he would likely need at a minimum a part-time staff person for this, possibly a full-time staff person. And the building department. Would be, um. Burdened as well, heavily, um, so that was definitely part of.
No, Ed is not, Ed, Ed, Ed is vastly in favor, uh, I don't know.
He made it out, but at that meeting.
No, I didn't, I'm not sure how much he's massively in favor of what the bylaw would be something, but he's massively in favor of just doing something.
At that meeting, which was a few years ago.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of time, a lot of time.
At that meeting. Didn't want the bylaw.
Hmm.
And. The select, the, the, the chair vice chair of the so, of the select board. Were supporting him. On that, and, uh, it was clear, it was clear to. To us.
So it'd be interesting to see.
Jean and I, it was made clear to Jean and I that at that time. It was, it was being back runner.
Sure, so it'd be interesting to see where it stands now, because I know, I mean, during, during the. Um, climate action group and the working group, and we're on the natural resources one that. He, he sees all for working, why aren't we doing something? Where's, where's the tree study committee, why aren't we doing something to make sure that we are doing something?
So that may be, so that, to that point. That may be what the select board are doing, picking up from what Ed's now saying.
Hmm, well, yeah, we, they, 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 the, the conversation at the end of this, somewhere towards the end of the year, so. Is going to be a relationship from the climate action committee, I believe, so I think that's happening because of the work we did, and the fact that we talked about trees. So I agree that that conversation that they want to have at some point is related to that, yes.
Right.
Yes.
Yes, so we've got a draft. Regulation, we've got a draft bylaw, we don't have draft regulations. We have draft bylaw, not draft regulations, I think is where we were.
But we have.
We did have the set of Wellesley's regulations, but they hadn't been, you know.
Yeah, and instead of major.
And so basically, that's.
Did a lot of work.
That's where it needs to be picked up, whether they reconvene the committee or start a new committee, but. Starting with that, you know, I think we need to. Ask the select board. Be through you talking to Kate or.
Yeah.
Or. Chair vice chair. They need to formally.
Find out where we are.
Um, approach the select board.
And what's, I mean.
It's a high priority, it's a high priority for the planning.
And Wellesley has had a number of years now. With this, I'm not sure when they first implemented it, they have, they have a number of years under their belt now. So I'm certainly going to reach out to them and try to get a little more information on how, how it's been working for them.
Newton also was head of tree.
Yeah, Newton has something, yeah, Newton definitely has something.
Newton has, my recollection is that Newton has a very strict.
They're more, they're definitely more, more strict than, absolutely.
So. All right, um. So we got a little direction there, thank you for speaking to the, uh. Without it, and for thinking, uh, targeting the select board, uh, as well, um. So correspondence, um. We have four items of correspondence. One is an email dated September eighteen from Rick Rogers of Seventy-eight Warren Street. Regarding eight eighty-eight grade plane, um. Uh. And, and the current property owners proposed redevelopment and rezoning of that. Uh, property. We have another email dated September twenty-eighth from Joe Abruzzi's. Uh, a town meeting member. Uh, from, uh, precinct D requesting the release of the minutes. Of the September eleventh executive session held between the select board and the planning board. Regarding the property sixteen eighty-eight. Uh, Central Avenue. Um. We. I understand from Chris Heat that, uh. Is he, he's reaching out on behalf of the planning board and the select board directly to Joe?
I understand he's handling it, because I'm managing.
Okay, and then, uh, the third item.
Do you know? I was handling it.
I'm, he was including the letter, I looked at Logan today to find out the status of it, I had heard that.
Because as much as I understand, Mr. Abruzzi's position is a very bad precedent to be releasing minutes of executive session. Beings.
In particular, when there is an ongoing matter.
I thought it wasn't ongoing.
It's not ongoing, it's not.
It's not.
We have.
I, I, I thought.
So, the, the appeal theater is run.
It's not.
The neighbors have filed an appeal. So.
Have they, have, have they appealed the building permit?
I, I, I don't know, I was doing, they appealed the decision.
Exactly, but somehow, somehow they're involved in some litigation.
They had an appeal.
Yeah.
They had, they had requested that they be allowed to intervene.
Hmm, right.
In the, in the land court. And the judge disallowed that motion.
Hmm.
And they appealed that. So that is, that has been appealed, that's at the appeals court.
I think the, the, the result of the decision is also.
Well, they don't have the right to appeal the results of the decision because they weren't a party.
And by.
The judge.
Or they would become, and they wouldn't have the right to appeal.
Absolutely, if they win at the appeals court, the appeals court would send it back and say you should have allowed it in.
Right.
And I don't, I don't know what the procedure would be at that point.
All right, and any of that, that's being handled.
That's right, Mr. Trump.
Uh, the letter, then we have a letter dated September twenty-sixth from Lee. To, uh, to Kate Fitzpatrick, our town manager. Where, uh, regarding a donation to the tree fund. In respect of the property address, um, I can't remember the property address in the.
You have a letter.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
We're not going to let you, we're not going to let you get away with that, you know, you're going to, you're going to have it in front of you, and you're going to put it in the record.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it does, but I'm right, it does not include the property address.
It doesn't, we, we, what are we talking about?
I appreciate your attention, Paul, and I manage the detail.
It just says the designated growth of South Street, yeah.
Yes, it was the property of nine twenty.
Properly located at nine twenty, uh, South Street.
Yeah.
Not the old, um. And then. The fourth item is a notice of hearing. Uh, from the town of Wellesley regarding a zoning bylaw change. And that, uh, notice of hearing was for a hearing to be held yesterday, October the second, um.
May I comment on that?
Sure.
Yeah, I note that Wellesley, uh, wants to increase the percentage of, uh. Residential units in, um, I guess in month. Um. I'm just leaving it at residential units, um, twenty percent, no less than twenty percent of our residential units are the affordable units. And it'll be fifteen percent will be individuals and households, under eighty percent of median, and five percent will be individuals and households. Between eighty-one percent and one hundred and forty percent.
Four.
They're, they're, they're going for the. They're, they're, they're going for the middle, more the middle income households that can't afford Wellesley anymore, and can't afford Needham anymore either. Um, I thought it was just interesting that they were doing that, and what is inclusionary zoning, uh, uh, districts, uh? The provisions of this section apply to all projects requiring approval of site plan review in all these various districts. Um, um. Yeah, so anyway, they, they're, they're having that, I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, I'd like to see it approved.
I think we should add the correspondence for the record that we received, uh, from Reg Foster to Boston Globe articles.
They were not included in our packet, so let's include them in our next packet.
Well, it's just, you know, it's, we're just noting what correspondence planning board has received, that's up to.
It was received, it was received.
Yeah, okay, so we know for the record.
One was about, uh, affordable housing to seniors, and the other was about portable housing in general, in general for families.
Right.
In the suburbs specifically, in, in the Boston suburbs.
Thank you, um, can you include the, the emails in your next packet as well, please? Uh, anything else? I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A second, we have a motion by already, a second by Paul, any discussion, hearing now, I'm gonna move it out, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, we are adjourned.